All right, you're ready. Go for it.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board Work Session for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. The first item on our agenda for this evening is a joint meeting between the Town Board and the Conservation Board. And we started this practice about a year ago now of bringing in each of our boards and commissions for kind of regular meetings where we can just sort of review the activities that they have before them. And the Town Board can just sort of catch up on their agenda for the coming year. And so we met with the Conservation Board and its Chair Karen Anton about a year ago now. And so they've come back before us this evening to to update us on their progress and to let us know what things they're working on in 2021. So I don't know who I'm turning over to.
Is Karen here? Okay.
Karen, Karen.
Have conversations with Karen?
Dennis, can you walk us through this?
I'm gonna send her a quick text.
Okay.
Sure. Hey, I was speaking with Karen earlier today. We went over the times and we were talking about other things. So would you like me to walk through the?
Do you want us to? Dennis, do you know if she's on her way? Like, do we, should we hold off? Should we go to Agenda Item Number Two and then come back to this?
We have two quick things.
You could hit the curveball. That's a pretty good pitch to hit. I think I will try to contact Karen in the interim. Thank you.
Okay, great.
All right. We'll advance the runners.
All right, so we have two other matters on for work session. One of them is authorization to issue a request for proposals for the roof at the Innewood Pump Station. And so we've done a tremendous amount of work at the Innewood Pump Station over the course of several years. Brand-new pumps, a new generator, needs a new move. So we need to issue an RFP for that so we can, we can get that done. Okay, that's the first item. And the evidently at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, there are repair parts for something called scraper flights. And I know, could, could you, could you make this up? And it is for it's vital to the dissolved air flotation process, just in case you were wondering. And so they've, let's see. Okay, so we're going to recommend it's a $5,415 purchase for corrosion products and equipment. This is an instance where the, this replacement stuff was part of the budget for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. Bart went out and got three bids. The most expensive was for $14,080. The second one was $7,087 and change. And this third one, the lowest responsible bidder, is for $5,415. So this was just letting the board know another large purchase, and we wanted to make sure that the board was aware of it. So when the bills came through, you knew what it was for. So with, with the board's permission, we will, we will submit the requisition form for that repair.
Yeah, I think we all look forward to seeing the new scraper flights when we
I know.
Millwood Water Treatment Plant this fall.
And everything that that, that involves, which is like being able to go wander through the Millwood Water Treatment Plant again with school groups. So, all good.
My favorite place in town.
Okay. So we, we do have the meeting agenda. Does the group just want to sort of go through it with the Town Board? You guys actually gave us this really comprehensive agenda to, to sort of go through. Is there anybody who might be ready to talk about just what you guys are thinking about Giddney Park? You had a fabulous program there earlier this year. Share it with those people who didn't didn't attend. Dennis?
I'll jump in. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Definitely jump in.
Sorry. And, and our, you know, the team will, will jump into, to because I, and also I don't have a copy of the agenda. I mean, we did, we did discuss it, so I'm not exactly sure what was written. But it's just to go back and talk about the Giddney Park experience, we received a grant of 105 tree, baby trees and shrubs from the Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
From the Department, D E C, Department of Environmental Conservation. And we were, part of the deal was that we needed to have community involvement in planting them. So we had a tremendous turnout. We, I don't remember the exact numbers, but we tried to do five slots over five hours each. So that would be at least 25 people, plus their, you know, family groups. And we, to plant these 100 trees, and it turned out that we were done by noon. So in three hours, we were oversubscribed, and it was a really great experience. People brought their, you know, very young children, you know, like two years old and three years old. So they'll be able to see these trees when they're older, you know, grow into something and remember that they planted them. So the next phase was, and that was extremely successful. So the next phase is to do an underplanting of native plants around those trees to, you know, suppress weeds and also build more, you know, biodiversity. So we've already placed the order for the plants that will be going in there. And we'll do another community event in the spring for, for that.
We're aiming, we're aiming for the second weekend in April, potentially.
Oh, that's happens.
And we'll do this. Weather dependent, and we'll do the same thing with the community outreach.
Exactly.
You know, communication in like the town newsletter and the Facebook groups and so forth.
Fabulous.
And, and have a staggered start time again because of keeping in mind COVID and all of those restrictions. So it's very top of mind as well.
That's just wonderful.
So sorry, Lucille, I miss you guys mentioned the second week of April.
Weekend, sorry. April 10th, I think, is a Saturday.
Um, you know, I'm not 100% positive, but I do, I, because I met with I can, this discovered chaplain committee, and he did mention that they were planning the fishing derby at Giddney Park.
Oh.
Um, so I just, I wasn't, I'm not positive what date it is in April. Jill, do you by any chance know?
I don't. I'm checking right now.
But just to know.
Yeah.
I think that's great to keep in mind because you're already going to have a lot of the community there. So it'll be kind of, even if they don't sign up for planting, just to kind of know that the town is doing these things.
Yeah, maybe it'll be festive.
A nice synergy, yeah. I mean, that's my thought on it.
Right now, during day of Giddney, you know, multiple different activities.
And I don't recall what day was cleanup day in general, but I was so hoping that we would maybe be able to breathe some life into that activity as well.
I'm, I'm guessing it's a little closer to Earth Day, but I don't know either what day it is. So.
I have to pull it. The beautification committee is in, in mid-planning for that. So
Oh, great.
If we want to be working collaboratively on it, we should initiate those conversations as soon as possible.
Okay. Lucille, do you want to talk about Tersia Brook?
You, why don't you do Tersia and I'll do
So Tersia Brook, we have already walked with Dennis around it, and I know that's part of what some mitigation is for the basketball court. So I know we had sent to you, Jill, a plan, a phased plan where the first phase would be just removing the invasive species that are there and then really tarping it for, for a season or a year at least. And then start to think about what kinds of shrubs we would add and then a herbaceous layer. But part of that, I think that's really important that we would like to do and work with the town is to have some signage. So people know what's going on there. So it's just, you know, they're going to see something that they don't even know. Well, they, they, I mean, it looks like a bramble, but when they see that things have just been removed and tarped over, I think it's just important to have some kind of public signage of what's going on here and why. And, and that includes, you know, water quality, planting native plants, you know, improving storm, you know, mitigating storms.
We have these, the great big white signs that we used when we were doing downtown construction. But also they were announcing, like when we were under construction for the, the basketball court and the playground. And I believe they're down at DPW. I can see that might be that you can, you know, put some sort of informational sign right out there, sort of in a key location, right around the basketball court in, in playground area there, just so that people know, you know, what are we up to, sort of thing.
Yeah.
That sounds perfect.
Okay, so I will find out about those white things. And the fishing derby is the 25th.
Oh, okay.
April 25th. So.
All right. So that's good to know.
May I ask, Missy, is this something that you envisioned being a permanent fixture or just during the work?
For Tersia Brook?
Yes.
Um, I think initially just during the work, but I think it would be nice to have after it's done and things are planted and hopefully successful, to have some kind of a signage about the importance of stream quality, water, and, you know, using plants as filtration mechanisms, et cetera. You know, something along those lines, environmental, I think would be a wonderful thing.
You know, I will say, the Newcastle Historical Society did some really great signs on that trail. They did like a horse really, I don't know if folks have seen it. It's on a really, it's very charming. It's on a wooden stand and it had, and I wish they kind of included like a scan code so you can scan it with your phone and get more information on, on it. Because it, it's not a large sign, but I certainly think that that would be a great example to pull from.
Okay.
They're lovely. We may even want to echo some of the information that's in those downtown, too. I was just walking through there on Sunday, so.
That, that sounds great. And I don't know, you know, I know Tersia Brook's downstream, but you know, behind the library, there's that whole really wat, like that waterfall. I imagine.
Really was.
Really was. Anyone hear me?
Oh, yeah.
I've been trying forever to get on.
Oh.
Oh.
So. Thanks. I've never, okay, I'm on the phone with, okay, thanks, Dennis. I'm on now. Thank you.
Okay.
And I just wanted, I just wanted to note, too, that a lot of these projects that, that the Conservation Board is undertaking, the plantings, the restoration at Tersia Brook, Brook, all of that is it really helps towards the town's stormwater management requirements every year. So, so congratulations to all of you for really putting forth that effort. It's really nice to, to, to be able to say that we're doing a lot of work in this area.
Thank you.
I want to apologize. I mean, this is not my first Zoom meeting. I don't know what happened. I kept trying.
No worries, no worries.
No idea. But at least I'm on, I don't know if I'm, can you guys see me? Because I can only see the Conservation Board Agenda thing here.
Just see your name blocked off.
Okay. Turn your camera on.
It is on.
Okay, so one of the things I just wanted to mention is that, that the Conservation Board is actually working with the Parks crews to take and remove the bramble along the sides of the, of Tersia Brook, and they'll be putting in some booms, is, am I using the correct terminology? They, they want to make sure that none of the debris
Right.
that they're removing gets into the water. So there's like a screening system that they put up.
And, and I think core logs, it's called.
Core logs. Thank you, Missy.
Yeah, coir, yeah, C O I R, I think.
And thank you for adding that because I failed to mention that about the partnership with Parks, which is important.
I missed a bit. I kind of heard a bit of what you guys have already addressed, the Tersia Brook. But did you want me to go through what we were trying to present?
Well, next is Glacier. Do you want to talk about Glacier?
All right. So have you mentioned, because I did not, in the midst of trying to get on, I didn't hear everything. I know Tersia Brook, you mentioned Giddney already.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're on Glacier. And Jill, I know when we spoke, you had mentioned, and I know Missy's reached out to you about, you know, possible other bridges or crossings that might be looked at in terms of trails and the mud and all of that. So I guess maybe at some point, or we could all go out and look as, you know, the board and, and see, looking at the different trails, whatever works.
Right. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful preserve. I almost don't want to talk about it too much because I, you know, it's my, my little secret. One of the better kept secrets in town. No, but I have to tell you, it's, it's a fabulous place. And the fact that it actually has its own trust for, for maintenance and improvement. You know, puts the Conservation Board in this, you know, just wonderfully unique position of being able to have a dedicated funding source for whatever improvements, you know, you want to, that you see fit for the, for the, for the preserve. It's, it's just a fabulous gem. It really is.
No, we're very lucky. I mean, I don't know at this point, I guess we should keep track, obviously, of the monies that are, at this point, left. There was about 100,000, I think.
If there still is, there's still significant funds there. If it's not 100, it's awfully close.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, we can kind of take a field trip and reassess. I know that we did want to put in crab apples at the entrance.
Oh.
An additional row of crab apples.
Right. What is, Dennis, what did, what was just planted there?
The five species that were planted at Glacier or just one specific spot? I'm sorry.
No, no, just at the entrance, you know.
Malus species, yeah, they're all crab apple cultivars and there's others of them sitting at Warburg doing nothing in a temporary mode. I figured we should put another row of them.
Absolutely. That's fabulous.
I have a question about that because I feel like the ones that were planted last year became very quickly engulfed in sort of a, I don't, and I, I'm not, I'm not smart enough to know whether that's invasive species and weeds and whether it's detrimental to the plantings that we did there. Or if it's, you know, I don't know if it's, it's harmful to the, the trees that were planted there. But, and I did notice that at some point, we had a couple of folks out who were doing some, some weeding around the trees, but it was taking a really long time for those guys. They were like, kind of doing like one tree at a time and, and they, they spent a lot of time on, on doing it. So.
So there is 100, according to Rob Deary, there's $132,000 in that trust for Glacier.
All right. Great.
Just to, just to follow up, though, with Ivy and those young people who are doing the vines. So it's a volunteer arm, the vine, what do we call it, Vine Squad? And it's one of our epic ambassadors is leading that charge. And, you know, he's dedicated and he also runs a an outdoors group for people with disabilities as well. So it's kind of a win-win community thing. So we, we're, we have some plans to get more young people involved in things and community members. And that could be something that we can focus on as well.
Um, yeah. You know, Dennis and I had been, we had a conversation today because I started thinking about something that I, I actually wanted to touch upon with Town Council, Nick. You there? Oh, no.
I am. Nope, I'm here.
Okay, Nicholas. My question is how does this work in terms of the liability of the town with having various students, depending on their age, whether they're high school or younger, in terms of some of the things that we're thinking about doing? And I bring that up because I'm really not quite sure how this works. I know when there's softball games or, you know, whatever, there are certain forms that have to be signed. But as we all know, I don't know how great those, you know, forms are if something, God forbid, ever really did happen. So I don't know what the town's view is on that. Or, you know, Dennis had raised an issue that I thought was interesting about with student members or student, students being interested in projects, whether they should start with like their own property. Or if we do have a group event, how would we really handle that? With Giddney, there were parents, for the most part, so that was helpful. Should we say that parents have to be involved with this? Can they just go off by themselves with us, the group? I'm just not clear about that.
Couple of responses. First off, volunteers are covered, if they're volunteers and they're volunteering for the town, and it's a town organized activity, the volunteers are covered by the town's insurance.
Okay.
Instances. The second point is, and I believe we prepared this previously, that our office at work, I thought maybe it was Dennis, but maybe it wasn't for this project, that there was a consent form and a release form whereby the parents were authorizing it if it was a minor. And even if it wasn't a minor, that an adult was signing off acknowledging that they were assuming certain risk and they were agreeing not to sue the town. So that would apply here as well.
Okay.
As far as the appropriate supervision, that's best discussed with the town administrator or, or Dennis as to, once you have the scope of the work. And again, the key here is to make sure that anyone who's doing the volunteer work is staying within the scope of the work that they, the town is asking them or that they're volunteering to perform.
Okay. I just thought, because I know that that was kind of an issue that comes up at some point, I don't mean to be like, you know, not as enthusiastic as everyone else is and I am, but I just was concerning to me because I started thinking about it and just didn't have the answer. So I guess that's the answer. In terms of the students, though, on that subject, we were talking about given the response that we had with a high school and actually middle school students, which really weren't part of the resolution, but we don't want to reject anyone. So maybe it's better to come up with a different situation where there aren't really student members, but more just committees of project, you know, groups that can basically focus on individual projects. I don't know what people think about that.
Well, Nick, in order for them to be covered, you know, could we, could we have just, I mean, we, we didn't know what the response would be. So the board agreed to two student members. But if there's, there's projects that they, you know, want to participate in and, you know, we want to encourage that, we could certainly, you know, open up the student members to, you know, to more than the two.
They need to be a member of the ERB to, to do the volunteer.
Conservation Board.
Conservation Board, excuse me. Do they need to be a member of Conservation Board to do the volunteer work?
I don't know.
Right. You could have two student members of the Conservation Board and then just have a project for students to volunteer for.
And that would be covered as well?
It would be covered as long as it's a town project, right? So the Conservation Board sponsors X Cleanup Week or whatever the case may be. Yes, as long as it's a town-sponsored event and we're volunteering for that and they sign the appropriate forms, there would be coverage.
Okay. I just wanted to know the steps. But I think that still doesn't answer the question about the students and how we include everyone. Maybe we shouldn't have any student members on the board. Because I don't quite know how we're going to.
Well.
I, I'm going to jump in for a minute. I think this is a problem we can certainly solve.
Yeah.
I don't, I, yeah, and I know, I don't know that it's necessarily germane to what our agenda is. I think it's important to bring it up. But I think as a Conservation Board, we have to kind of come up with our own solution and, and figure out what, what the best thing to do is. But welcome, of course, any input from the Town Board. If you guys have experience with other boards that have multiple students involved, we would definitely welcome any Yeah. any guidance on that.
Yes. Are there, can anyone share, I think this?
Well, you know what? Why don't, why don't we do this offline? Because you, you have a really ambitious agenda that, that I would really like to get through. And unfortunately, we have a, unfortunately, we have a public hearing that, right after this, so that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely. Just speak about the Eagle Scout project?
Um, yes. Well, we were contacted by, actually Dad, John, I can't remember, call his last name.
Jeffrey.
Jeffries. John Jeffries and John Jeffries, or they were both John. And so we're supposed to, actually, I think Tom, are you there? Because I can't see everyone. Tom and Missy spoke to him about the project. Can you enlighten what your conversation was? Because they just get general. From what I understand, you had more of a detailed conversation.
Um, yes, but, but I thought, I think we should follow the agenda. Um, I guess.
I was just asked that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So, so yes, we have an Eagle Scout who's interested in developing some kind of educational outreach about invasive species management. He's interested in developing a website, educational materials, and then also organizing troop members to go out and do some invasive species removal in certain parks. But it's very much in the planning phases and Tom and I are communicating with him on that.
So that's basically where it stands at the moment. And I think that Dennis reached out to the dad and also to the son, but I do not believe you have heard back. Is that correct, Dennis?
They actually provided the letter that I requested as part of that PRISM grant application that we submitted on Friday.
Okay.
And, right, this is all kind of serendipitous. It certainly wasn't a plan in terms of we're applying for the grant and then this young gentleman comes forward with his Eagle Scout project, talking about invasives. And we're trying to apply for a grant to do this preliminary investigative GIS mapping of the invasives that I encountered as part of doing my work for updating the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So, you know, this is like one of these, seems to happen with me and I take it when it does. You know, it's not necessarily a best-laid plan, but it certainly comes to fruition and I'm not going to stop that momentum. So that's kind of where we're at right now with that.
That's great. That's very exciting. Is he concentrating in one particular area or is he talking about invasives throughout town?
I'll jump in here. So right now, no, he doesn't have, I mean, the parks in general, but nothing specific. Yeah. So it's very much in the planning phases, but as Dennis said, it was a kind of a serendipitous moment to bring those two things together.
And I think his goal also appears from, what I did glean from the conversation that we had, his goal was to set something up so that in the future, maybe other scouts could follow this. It could be kind of very much a template or a framework. Because he will, in essence, I think, age out within a year, I believe, something to that effect. So, but it could be used going forward with other, for other scouts, which are now boys and girls, I guess. So I guess it's not just eagles or however they're doing it now. So that's what hap, is happening with that. One question that we had was, it was expressed to us that the Town Board is interested in open space and what we're doing about open space or what our thoughts are. And from what, you know, speaking with Victoria, who has done a lot of work about this. And she has reached out to other towns, specifically Bedford and Pound Ridge, I believe, and learned how they're dealing with things. And one of the things that they're doing, which also segues into our issue regarding the tree ordinance, is they have an open space committee that's particularly, you know, really just obviously focused on open space. And it would be nice if we could maybe have something like that as well, create something like that. Because a lot of these issues, so broad, it's very difficult to really focus on things unless you really have the focus on one specific area, such as open space or such as trees. So maybe Victoria wants to share quickly, you know, what her conversations have been over the past few days. And, you know, any ideas she may have. Do you want to do that, Victoria?
Sure. Thanks, Karen.
Welcome.
So, yeah, it feels like a lifetime ago, actually, Ivy, when we met about open space with Jill and a couple of other folks in Westchester Land Trust about how we could kind of look at our entire town in the open space, you know, both private and public lands, and kind of think about, you know, natural resources inventory and also prioritizing which properties might be important to save for ecological reasons. And, you know, in general, quality of life in the town. So, um, so the great news update is that Kellen Cantrell has been doing a lot. So, so the great news update is that Kellen Cantrell has been doing a lot of work on this and mapping out, in fact, I should share at some point this beautiful mapping that he's created around looking at, you know, the entire town and the parks and the private property. And so he's a wonderful partner in this. And he and Dennis have also been looking at natural resources inventory kind of questions. And I've been reaching out to different towns to look at the different criteria that they use around open space. So we're trying to build momentum around this piece again and in our goals for this year again. The hope is that in the next month or two, we can come back to the board with our criteria based on a lot of the best practices we found at other towns and with a few of our own specific interests there that we want to add so that it's customized to Newcastle. So we would hope, once we have, you know, a solid draft of that, to come back to you and share for your input.
And, and just so the town board understands the relationship of Kellen's work with this, this is, and Dennis, this is also being used to help us update the parks and recreation, the open space plan, the master plan, so.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. I mean, it's like beautiful timing of kind of the synergy of those complementary projects lining up.
Um, and I was just curious, I mean, are there, or we were all just curious, are there other issues regarding open space that maybe we're missing that the town would like to focus on?
No, I think it's primarily, I'll speak and then I think Lori probably wants to say something too. I mean, I think primarily it's, it's figuring out just what is that, that kind of master plan around open space? What does that look like for our community? How can we grow the open space within our community? And how can we identify properties that we can put on sort of a strategic plan or a roadmap? So that, you know, as things become available, as opportunities sort of present themselves, you know, a lot of this conversation, at least between Victoria and I on this matter, started, you know, when the, the sale of the Button Hook property, you know, when that property went up for sale and there was suddenly an awareness that, you know, there could, could be an opportunity there, might have been an opportunity there to do sort of an open space project. So it was, it was just sort of a matter of, of us kind of trying to identify where those opportunities exist within town, sort of mapping those and then thinking about, you know, what does a strategic plan look like for how we can potentially, you know, sort of build our open space inventory going forward in a, in a sort of large, long-range strategic way as opposed to a reactive manner.
And I think, I think that's kind of the mission of our board too. I know Steve Coleman did this in 1999. He sent us that whole then, which is now. Okay, I can't do that, 20 years, a long time ago. But yeah, like 21 years ago. So I think, I think to your point, Ivy, I think it would be great for us to kind of be proactive and kind of seeing what's there, what's available as opposed to being reactive. And how the board figures out to do that, I'm not sure. But I think it's definitely something we should be concentrating on for sure.
Um, well, perhaps that is, is it possible? How would we be able to go about then having an open space committee started, established? Any thoughts about that? Does it have to be, can it just be a committee that we designate? Does it have to go through the town board or?
I, I'm just gonna jump in. I don't think we need a committee. I think we, as a board, can decide and talk offline about how the best practices are for doing something like this. We can have a committee within our board to work on it. And I think that works well when we have a few designated people to work on a project as opposed to the entire board. I feel like that is more efficient.
Though I think Victoria was, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought when Victoria spoke to Bedford and Pound Ridge, they have separate, are the committees within their board or outside of their board? Maybe I've misunderstood you.
Yeah, it's interesting. They do have designated separate committees apart from their Conservation Boards, but specifically focused on open space, open space committees. Many of them have been in place for decades, a couple, you know, long-term work over the years. And it's just something for us to think about in terms of whether we do, you know, it kind of shows, I think for those two towns especially, that really have prioritized open space and conservation, it's an interesting statement that they've made to designate a separate committee. I'm sure it works somewhat in tandem, kind of Venn diagram overlap a little bit with the, with the Conservation Board work there. But it is something we may want to consider that if it is a priority and I, you know, that's why I think Karen was kind of inquiring about how this is, how the town sees this as a priority in terms of open space and ultimately the potential of designating. I mean, I hear, I totally hear you, Missy, something that we need to kind of flesh out a little bit more in terms of the distinct priorities that the two would have. But, you know, it, it certainly indicates a, a very strong prioritization that those two towns have for open space.
So Victoria, do you think that this would work as a subcommittee of the Conservation Board? Or do you feel like with the current board size that, you know, that there isn't the bandwidth to give it the attention it deserves? Could it function as a subcommittee of the Conservation Board if there was, you know, essentially, essentially an expansion of the Conservation Board to bring in some people who were committed to that point alone?
It's a great question and a very timely question because we recently have expanded the number of members on the Conservation Board. So certainly now, maybe there is more bandwidth than there would have been a year ago or even six months ago to actually have a few folks dedicated to that. It just, if you go to the websites, you know, and I don't want to belabor this because we have so much on the agenda, but they're doing an incredible amount of work. I mean, it's a lot of effort to really do it right. And so, yeah, maybe at this point, we, you know, to your question, Lori, maybe now we could have a subcommittee that could really dedicate itself and have the, you know, ample resources to do so.
Right, you know, and I suppose one of the things you could consider, right, is establishing this as a subcommittee of the Conservation Board. And really, the, the function, the, the primary function of that subcommittee would be to start scoping out the challenge. Right? And, and really kind of develop, you know, this is the, this is the work that would, you know, that this activity includes. And here are the activities, right? And then that gets you closer to an action plan for how to put that into place. And some of that may be beyond the scope of volunteer work, right? Some of this may be, you know, in the domain of work that the town needs to contract or, you know, or get done through other parts of town business. But the, you know, but, but first you kind of need to develop a plan for how to, for how to tackle this challenge. And, and I think that you already have this core of individuals who are passionate about this topic and hopefully some that are interested in focusing on it to, to start developing that initial scope of, of vision.
Absolutely, to a strategic plan right up front. And you're right, some of it we can do internally, some we, and we've talked about this on the Conservation Board with Dennis around potentially getting a grant or hiring a consultant to do the natural resources inventory. So certainly setting everything forth with our objectives and a timeline and kind of looking at which pieces can be done internally and by whom.
Can I, can I encourage, can I encourage somebody from the Conservation Board participating in the parks, in the Recreation and Parks Open Space Master Plan? And the reason I ask this is because a lot of what you are talking about is, is related to the open space that is being considered under the Parks Plan. In the past, the Parks Plan focused on recreation and programming. This time around, we are opening it up to talk about open lands and, and open space in general. So I think having a synergy between your board's interest in open space and development of that plan would be essential to get us off the ground with the right structure for you to continue carrying your open space mission.
That's a great idea. If you could put us in touch with the right folks to reach out to, to connect on this, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely, we should have.
That would be me!
Yeah.
Great!
Yeah, we absolutely should have a spot on that. I'm gonna add that into our, like, gun.
Excellent.
Just tell me, tell me who, I'll tell you when the meeting is. And if you want more than one person, that's fine too.
Thank you.
Green, that's really, that's a really great point. And it seems like it could kick off this initiative in a major way that is funded. The work that is funded already.
That's awesome.
Right, to understand this, their scope versus this scope and where there's overlap, really important. So thank you.
Yeah. I mean, one thing I would like to add to what Ivy kind of mentioned about being proactive versus reactive, as part of this might also be, how do we determine how we could obtain land that isn't now under the, you know, direction of the Parks and Recreation private lands, such as the School Board parcel? How can we set that up so we can go forward in whether it's issuing funds, whatever it might be? We need that part that we don't have. And I think it would be part, more of a town responsibility and ability as opposed to us.
Right.
As a volunteer.
There are some really good data points from, especially Bedford, that have been fleshed out for us now, in terms of how they've done that in the past as best practice example that we are more privy to now. So we can, you know, continue to build on that, Karen. And set forth and, and return to the town board as needed as we're fleshing that out.
Great. So I know.
Can I just jump in, Karen? I, I'm sensitive to their seven o'clock cutoff. And I just wanted to, very quickly, just cover two quick things. One is the, and it's on the agenda, the Lower King and Train Station.
Yeah, that's what I was just getting to.
Okay, well, I, I have like the document and I was gonna share them because it's visual and I thought people would like it. Can someone allow me to share? Thank you.
You can share.
Yep, I'm going. Okay, you should see, be able to see this document. I'll make it a little bigger. So, um, let's see, wait a minute. So, um, one of the objectives we had was, you know, we had those, I think there were 20 odd trees in the Warburg Preserve. Plus, we were, there's, there were some, we were asked by Jill and the town to look at the train station area and Lower King. So this is what, this is the output of that effort. So Dennis and a couple of us walked around and did a survey and did a design. And I'm going to, like, just very quickly walk through. I'm not gonna like read every line and stuff, but everybody knows what this is, right? So these semicircles here have a number of dead or missing trees. So we've, we identified them, we mapped them out. We identified what we'd like to put in. And again, we're using the Warburg inventory to, you know, reduce costs and use those, those trees. Most of, about half of them are native and the other half are at least, they're not invasive or anything like that, but they're like environmentally sound.
And they're, and they're good street trees.
And they're good trees, street trees. So we have, I mean, again, we've sent this out, you, you guys can read it, but that's what that part is. And we have it identified, the different sections. And we have a Phase One and a Phase Two if needed. There's some other work that's going on with the Beautification Committee next week, but that's sort of an aside for this topic.
Yeah, I do, I do want to echo though, that, that particularly for Hamlet Center projects, that the engagement of the Beautification Committee is essential here. So that we don't have publications of effort and folks working at cross purposes.
Exactly, so.
Uh, because, for example, the cataloguing of dead trees was done like over a year ago with the Beautification Committee and without a whole lot of movement on that topic. And then to have you guys doing it again, like, we need better communication between, between our boards, particularly as pertains to our downtown Hamlet spaces.
Okay, and, 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 and you're absolutely right, of course, and I agree. And I'm gonna show you, we have that as one of our goals, which I'll show you everybody next. But, um, so anyway, and then we have the Lower King and Railroad Track. So we've identified that area. And again, we have some steps and phases, what we're gonna take out, what we're gonna put in, you know, weed and prep, things like that. And then there's the section, this is that bridge, but there's the planting site up there that has basically yucky weeds. And we have some identification of the plants to put in there as well. So this is all, and then we identified the things that can go in with a plant, project plan for the Tersha Brook is, area as well. So it's all been like outlined, documented, you know, tree listing, extra things that need to be purchased, extra things to be relocated. So it's comprehensive and we, you know, done it as a real project plan.
And, and I'm gonna jump in for just a second.
And Missy.
Uh, because of what you said about beautification. So we are gonna meet with Phyllis next week and walk around. But you're absolutely right that I think we should have, we should also completely share this plan with the Beautification Board and that we have not done yet.
I think Dennis shared it for you.
Oh, he did, oh, he did.
Yeah, so I do want to compliment you on the work. It's, it's really, it really is a comprehensive effort and some really wonderful selections and, and identifications of spaces that, you know, will really benefit from, from the labor that has, has clearly been put into this.
And, yeah, and our goal was to use up the trees that were just sitting there. I mean, that was one of the primary things, was not to let these things go to waste because they are suitable to the site.
Yeah, you know, on the, on the topic, on the combined topic, I think of this, you know, the plans around Tersha Brook and, you know, and open, open space efforts. You know, one of the things that I would really love to see is for us to really work through how we can expand, like a wild space buffer around Tersha Brook. And, and perhaps even consider developing ways to expand the natural space, but also create some opportunity to use the space for, for passive walking through. Because, because it is a really beautiful area and if we can make it accessible in addition to protected, we could really make a big impact, I think, on, on the beauty of our downtown and our use of it. Um, if I could jump in, Lori, I just wanted to say that I agree with you, especially as you're talking about this, that we need to find a way, I think, at this point for the Conservation Board and the Beautification Board to work together on these projects. Because, as you said, we shouldn't have duplicative working, duplicative work and we shouldn't be at odds. Because I think we have kind of two different focuses. And we need to coordinate them somehow. Otherwise, I think there'll be an issue that nobody intends. And that's my thought about that. I don't know if others feel that way. But I thought maybe we should get to some of the, quickly, some of the other things we wanted to touch on.
Can I just say one quick thing? I won't, and then I'll, and then I'll shut up and stuff. But just to follow up on that thing, Lori, and I think we, when we met with Ivy one of, last year or wherever, I think we discussed making a quarterly meeting with everybody who had like any kind of gardening, kind of landscaping, horticulture mission. So the Garden Club, the B A B, our group, Healthy Yards, Pollinator Pathways. And I guess that we, we forgot or whatever. But I, we remembered it recently and, you know, all, I think, you know, we'll get that going. We'll do that at least quarterly with the appropriate groups and get that moving. And, you know, with a set agenda, set timelines and all that kind of stuff. Because it's so, that's an easy thing for us to do and we just, I don't know, we got distracted. So sorry about that. And then the only other thing I want, just tell everybody, and we don't have to go through it, is, you know, we do have explicit goals that we, and objectives that we put together for the committee, the Conservation Board. So, and we, we followed the comprehensive plan. So things that are appropriate for our group to take on, you know, harmony with nature, for example, is one of them. So we have goal, specific goals assigned to each of those categories with people assigned, steps and so forth. So, you know, I'm just flipping through here so you can see, but there's lots of goals in here. And we'll be able to document how far we've come on each of those things. So.
Dale, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I just touch on that point about repurposing plantings and everything? I just noticed in the back parking lot, and I walked through this with I, those plantings, is that the median between the parking spots in the back parking lot behind like Chapala Paint and Hardware? There are a lot of large bushes, it's getting kind of weedy back there. But also I just noticed that a lot of people don't like walking around those plantings. And I'm wondering
They walk through them.
If we could, you know, kind of create more space there so that people don't have to, you know, especially. Especially on, on snowy days, it's, it's certainly um, very tricky. So just another thought of, of a resource is that back parking lot, there's, there's a, just. A variety of plantings back there that I think could, could be really um, useful in other areas.
Oh, uh, could, that actually um, goes to something else we wanted to talk about, which is around the middle school. Um. What we could do as a project to enhance, you know, that area more because it kind of needs. We think something more than what's there, especially where the trees were planted um. Along the fence, along the fields. So maybe we could rearrange some of the plantings that we have, use them and transplant. And we're trying to see how we could soften. What, you know, it looks like with just the trees and the fence, like we kind of. It kind of needs more, at least that's what some of us have been talking about. Maybe we could use it as a way of demonstrating, like a demonstration garden, maybe we could. Introduce some native species, something to integrate more with what, more than what's there right now. Um, do you guys know what I'm talking about?
No, could you be a little bit more specific for me?
Sure, you know, where they now, I don't know what you want to call it, the jumbo truck, whatever that, you know, the.
Electric sign, yeah.
And then there are the row of sugar maples that were planted because so much was taken out. Kind of trying to rework that area again, try to introduce. Some more plantings or something different to soften it, to integrate it more. Because it seems to be somewhat barren. I mean, that's kind of what different people were saying. I don't know if it's something that's not in the plan, but it could be in the plan.
So that's not town property, that's school property. And um, but before I got too far down the road, I would certainly reach out to the school district and just engage them.
Okay.
In that conversation, they, they may think it's the most fabulous idea to plant more things, they may not, so. I, I don't want to speak for them, but I just wanted to just throw up a little flag there that, that it's not our property to, to be planting, so.
Oh, really? Up to like where the sidewalk is?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. So the other thing we were talking about was, you know, obviously. Lower King Street, which we've spoken of before and th- that we would like to do some underplanting there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the other important topic, we've just talked about trying to coordinate with the Beautification Board. Um, is talking quickly about the tree code, the tree ordinance. And I mentioned that we're just gonna touch on it today because there's no time really. But try, in thinking about it and viewing it, um. We had a little subcommittee um, on the Conservation Board and we looked at other tree ordinances. And we were hoping that we could discuss the concept or possibility of creating a tree advisory committee. Which would totally be focused on trees, obviously, and also trying to perhaps tweak. The ordinance as it stands because in some ways it feels as if it isn't as important. Or doesn't have the teeth that say the wetlands ordinance has. Now, clearly the board is not a permitting authority, we're not a permitting authority, E R B is. And there are no permits involved in that sense, although obviously Dennis issues permits for tree removal. But we're just think that there is some. Despite the best intents and perhaps because, you know, things have changed as time has gone on. We just think we need to have more teeth in the tree ordinance because. And we'd also like to see if we can move forward with the annual report about the monies in the tree bank. Where does it come from? Does it represent fines or does it represent mitigation? And really trying to see if we can stress more without. Unduly burdening the private property rights of a homeowner. If we can encourage people to maybe think twice before they remove a tree because right now the ordinance makes it fairly. I don't want to say easy, but. There's always the ability to remove the tree. Because we're allowing that to happen by just paying into the tree bank fund. So is there another step without being again, unduly onerous? Where we can encourage more preservation of trees? That's the beginning of a conversation that we would like to have with the town when it's appropriate. And I know you've got a lot on your plate.
Right, and I actually have come up with some tangible ideas based on best practices that we found in other towns. Um, and just through our own brainstorming about um, creative ways to find that balance, to strike that balance that Karen was talking about. So perhaps uh, a few of us can come to a town board meeting and share some of the highlights.
Yeah.
With you.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely be interested in your thoughts on, um, you know, including. Some, some language around the removal of invasive species of trees. And the encouragement of planting of perhaps more um, friendly species of trees.
Yeah, and I think we have to be mindful when we have these conversations too about the um, sort of. Disaster preparedness and, and storm, um, storm hardening aspects of, of tree removal too. Because, you know, there's, there's sort of two conversations that we've been having and that I, I actually feel passionate about both sides of this. So I feel passionate about, you know, wanting to save as many of the, the town trees as we can. And at the same time, I also feel um, equally passionate about making sure that the town does the storm hardening work that we need to do. So that we have fewer power outages when we have these major storms that are becoming more and more frequent, so. Um, you know, I.
Yeah, that's what makes.
Interesting conversation for the future.
Yeah, that, you're right, that's what makes it so difficult. Because I mean, wetlands can be dangerous, I suppose, but it's not the same as trees. I mean, you have more lead time with something happening with a flood perhaps, hopefully, than you do with the issue of trees, so it does make it difficult.
Right, and there are some times where it's, you think you're doing something good by taking down trees, but really. You're making the other trees more vulnerable and creating less protection from trees coming down. So we really want to talk with you about some of these observations that we've made and again, to your point, Ivy, striking that balance. Where we are keeping everyone safe and we're doing the right thing um, ecologically speaking as well.
Right, so I hate to cut off the conversation, but I'm, I'm mindful of the time and, and the need for us to transition into our town board meeting. Um, I want to thank all of you for spending the last hour with us and for updating us on. What you guys are doing. I'm actually blown away by how organized. Uh, how organized you guys have gotten over the course of the past year. Um, and, and how many really exciting projects and initiatives you have um, on your plate right now. And as far as the, the tree ordinance work, I mean, I think Victoria, the recommendation that you made is absolutely the right one as you guys. Have, you know, kind of solidified kind of your ideas and your recommendations. Um, inviting you to come to a town board work session where you can, you know, specifically speak to us with those recommendations. Um, especially if you could email them to us in advance, but we have a chance to take look at them and we can, you know, then really be focused on the, the content. Uh, and the details, that would be great, um, and we can definitely set that up.
Absolutely, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share with you.
And thanks for all your hard work. Those plans that you created are fabulous. We're, we're so excited to get this thing, you know, can't wait for spring. Let's get going.
Me either, and sorry for my Zoom glitch, whatever it was, I'll never know.
We're just glad you were able to join us.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Super impressed and, and excited to, to work with you all more closely as your liaison.
Yes, thank you Lori, we're looking forward to it.
So um, I will entertain a motion to come out of the work session. Um, however, I'd like to take a two-minute break before we enter into, yeah, okay, good, I see that again. I gotta run and use the bathroom, uh, before we enter into our town board meeting, so uh, should we?
So I move to what, end the work session and take a two-minute bathroom break before we start the town board meeting?
You have to officially ask for the bathroom break, I'll second that.
Your journey, your, your journey, your meeting and you're all stepping away from your.
Okay, that sounded a lot better. I bet we'll be right back, okay, good, okay.
We'll be right back, thanks everybody. Hey, thanks for your patience, everyone. Um, I'm just wait, Nick, are you back? Give us two more seconds, everybody, we're just returning from our uh, quick break. And I think that's everybody. Okay, do, Nick, Nick, do I now need a motion to come out of the bathroom break?
You now write, write, motion to reconvene into a town board meeting.
Oh, Jeremy, oh, he dropped off completely, didn't he?
Yeah.
That's weird, he was here a second ago.
Yep.
I've been kicked out and can't get back in, he says.
Hmm.
You know what? Um. Does he have the regular one? If, as an attendee, I can bring him back in.
He says, meeting reached capacity.
Whoa. I think because Karen is still with us perhaps as a panelist.
I'm new, so I'm a little clueless, I'll get out.
All right, let me, okay, let me do that, let me do that and um.
My apologies.
Not at all.
We'll try to get him back in.
Okay. Do, Pam, do you want me to ask him to come back in?
Yeah, try to have him come back in. And if he can't get in as a panelist, he can come into the regular meeting and I'll, I'll drag him in.
I think he's saying he doesn't have the ability to do that either.
And I, does he even have the login for that?
Yeah, I don't know that he's got the login.
Can't, he said.
All right, I'll bring in, don't worry, I'll get him.
I don't even know, can, can you like, how many people do we have on? Can new people join?
Only if they're registered. We had a hundred and sixty registered.
Oh. But everybody can watch it live on N C C M C.
I'm still working on it, it, it might take a while. Yep. We'll work on it.
Okay.
We could do that.
Do we only have a hundred max attendees now?
No.
Hmm. Okay.
Should we all sign off and sign back in? Does.
No. No, Karen's actually gonna come in.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we're allowed to hu- five hundred, so. It shouldn't be a max.
Okay, now he says he's watching and he can't, but he can't see or hear himself, so. Maybe he's in the audience.
I got him, hang on.
People are texting me that they can't get in either.
Funny, no one's texting.
All right, you see, hear me?
Oh.
Yes, Sharon.
Can't see though.
I'm sure people are so distraught.
There he is.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you, sorry, everybody.
Okay, so um, where were we? We were gonna take a motion to exit our bathroom break. See, that joke's not funny anymore now. And turn into the town board.
So.
Reconvene.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the town board meeting for February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the first, uh, I, I know most folks are here this evening for our public hearing, uh, which will start in just a moment. Um, but we do have a couple of things just to move through really quickly. Um, with regard to the supervisor's report, I will, as I have in weeks past when we've had a full agenda. Uh, hold my supervisor's report, it will be published tomorrow in the uh, e-newsletter. Uh, Jill, do you have anything for this evening for the administrator's report?
I'm gonna hold mine. The only thing I just want to say is just a shout out to our D P W crews who have been just fabulous and tireless in. The face of these storms and they, I, I can't say enough about them. Um, and, and thank you to the, to the community for sending their thanks along as well. It really means a lot to them to know that their efforts are, are being appreciated. They, they're just spectacular, yay Bart.
Yeah, one hundred percent. We have a new D P W commissioner this year, Bart. Yeah, 100%. We have a new DPW commissioner this year, Bart Carey, first year, and he's, you know, straight into the fire and he's doing an amazing job, so we're so grateful. So the, the next item on the agenda for this evening is public comment, new business. So this is the portion of the town board meeting that is devoted to any public comments. This is not for the public hearing, so if you're here for the public hearing, you can put your hand down. We will get to you. We will be doing comments for the public hearing in just a moment, but if you're here for any other reason and would like to speak to the town board on a topic unrelated to the Form-based code or the DGIS, this portion of the meeting is for you.
There's one with their hands raised.
And now we have no hands.
Can we just confirm that, because my phone is like blowing up, that people are trying to get into the meeting who registered and can't get in? And I'm worried that it won't be a complete public hearing if people are trying to get in to speak and can't get in. I'm working on that with Carrie right now. Okay.
Okay.
Do we wanna do just our consent agenda things while we're waiting? Or is this gonna be a little bit, Pam, or?
She's checking right now. So you can do consent agenda and then we'll flip it back. If you want.
Okay.
We can wait, doesn't, whatever.
I don't have it in front of me, so someone wants to lead off with that.
Actually, there's more, it's over 104 right now, so it looks like they're growing, so she must have changed the setting, so they're all in. Okay.
Okay, now I see 103. I just don't wanna get started and if we're having issues. Lisa, do we know if we have anybody who's still having issues getting in?
Uh, I don't know. Nobody's, nobody has texted me in the last minute. No, it should, it should be all rectified, so they should be able to, yeah. 104, so yeah, 105, so they're coming in.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and get started then. Can we get a motion from the town board to open, to reopen the public hearing? On the proposed Form-Based Code and the Draft Generic Environmental Impact Statement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the sixth public hearing on the Draft Generic Environmental Impact Statement, the DGIS, and the Form-Based Code for the Chappaqua hamlet. Before we dive into everyone's public comments tonight, and I know there's a lot of people who are eager to speak, I do just have a brief statement that I wanna read into the record tonight that was provided to me by town council. So tonight, the town board will consider closing the public hearing on the DGIS and adjourning the public hearing on the Form-Based Code to a future date. As previously discussed, we will leave the record open for written comments on the DGIS for 30 days until 5:00 PM on Thursday, March 25th, 2021. Before I comment on the next steps, I briefly wanna summarize steps in the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the SEACER process, that have already occurred. So a little more than a year ago, on January 14th of 2020, the town board introduced the scoping document for the DGIS. The scope, in essence, functions like a table of contents for all of the potential impacts that were then studied in the DGIS. To develop the scope, the town board held two public hearings and received comments from the public and interested agencies. The final revised scope for the DGIS was adopted by the town board on April 20th, 2020. And thereafter, the town's professional consultants prepared the DGIS and the town board accepted that DGIS as complete back on September 23rd, 2020. We, at that time, scheduled our first public hearing for October 20th. Prior to that public hearing, the town held three community engagement sessions, and the town board has also held joint meetings with interested agencies such as the Chappaqua Central School District, the Chappaqua Fire Department, and the Chappaqua Volunteer Ambusals Board. As previously mentioned, tonight is our sixth public hearing. In addition, the town board has received numerous written public comments, all of which can be viewed on our public comment portal, which is available on our website, chappacquaforward.org. As far as the next steps, after the public comment period closes on March 23rd, the town's consultants will review all of the comments that have been received and prepare written responses to all substantive comments. The responses will be produced in a document that's known as the final Generic Environmental Impact Statement, the FGEIS. According to SEACER regulations, the FGEIS must contain the following items: the DGIS with any revisions, and all of the comments received on the DGIS and the town board's responses to the substantive comments raised during the review of the DGIS. The town board will review the consultant's draft FGEIS and provide comments before accepting the FGEIS as complete. After we do accept the FGEIS as complete, there will then be an opportunity for the public to comment on the FGEIS before the town board adopts our findings statement. Lastly, after the town board adopts the findings statement, we will consider adoption of the Form-Based Code and the public will again have the opportunity to comment at a public hearing. In addition, in addition, excuse me, in addition to addressing the comments received on the DGIS, the town board will also be reviewing and considering changes to the Form-Based Code itself, including the areas to be rezoned, the review and approval processes for future development, and the substantive text of the proposed zoning legislation. That is, ooh, that's a big sigh. That's the, that's the end of my prepared statement. There's one other thing that I just wanted to address briefly before we get started, just to sort of address the elephant in the room, as it were. We intended for this final public hearing to be focused around the Board of Education's final comments. At our last public hearing, we learned from the BOE's council who attended the hearing that the findings that had been shared with us back on January 13th were not final and that the Board of Education would have their final comments to us by February 18th. As of tonight, February 23rd, we don't have the final comments from the Board of Education. We have requested and not yet received the consultant's revised scope of work. We're not, we don't have a clear sense at this point of what is being studied. However, in an email to the town board earlier today, the Board of Education informed the town board that they do expect to receive the final report from their consultants shortly and will share it with the community prior to the March 3rd school board meeting. So that said, the town board noticed a public hearing for February 23rd, and here we are. So we will go forward and we will hold this public hearing this evening. As we mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, after the hearing this evening, we will consider a motion to close the public hearing and to hold open the written comment period for 30 days thereafter, which means that all of the comments that are received from the interested agencies, including the Chappaqua Central School District, everything that is received before March 23rd from the public as well, all of those will be responded to in our FGEIS. So one more thing to go over before I open up the floor to comments. Just briefly want to remind everyone, as I have at our past meetings, of the ground rules for our public hearing. So let me blow this up. Okay, so for those who have not attended one of our previous public, five public hearings, just when you're called to speak, if you can please state your name, your address, and your organization, if any, please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Christina Papes will be our timekeeper and will give you a signal at the two-minute-and-30-second mark. And then I will gently, at the three-minute mark, encourage you to wrap up. Please try not to repeat comments that are made by others. That includes comments that have been submitted and discussed at previous public hearings. We do have all of these comments and we will be responding to all of them. Please don't expect a response from the town board here at the public hearing. Again, we're collecting all of the substantive questions and comments and they will be addressed in writing by our consultant team. Afterwards, even if you have spoken, if you can please submit your comments in writing to chappacquaforward@mynewcastle.org. That helps us to make sure that we've captured all of the content correctly and that we're responding to the, the true meaning and intent of your comment. Please observe, observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Address all members of the town board and avoid speaking to any one member directly. Anyone who fails to yield the floor may be asked to cease speaking and to yield the floor. And last but not least, please do not type questions about the Form-Based Code and the DGIS to the town board into the chat function. So the chat function can be used to notify us if you're having any technical difficulties entering the call, and we will also type questions to you if we're having any difficulty bringing you into the, into the conversation. But the conversations that we're having in chat are not being captured and memorialized as a part of the public record for the public hearing, so please do not type your substantive questions into chat. Okay. That is everything from me for the beginning of the call. And so Pam, with that said, can we start to take questions from the audience? If, if you're here and you haven't been here before, the thing to do in order to get brought into the meeting is to raise your digital hand, which you can do using the function at the bottom of the screen.
Okay. Did you want all of us to say something first? Didn't you text me on that?
I think we're gonna speak after all the comments are received.
Got it, okay. Okay, first up is Ronnie Diamondstein. You're allowed to talk. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. The chat, just so you know, Chad has been disabled, so if people have problem, they, they aren't able to tell you. I just checked that. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Ronnie Diamondstein. I live in the hamlet of Chappaqua on North Greeley. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as a resident of the town of Newcastle since 1997. First, I wish to thank the board for your service to our community. It's a great commitment and you're much appreciated. I have to say, though, that I'm dismayed and disappointed by what I have heard and seen written by town board members regarding the DJIS and the Form-Based Code. Many residents are traumatized by this and the, the anxiety in the town is palpable and unpleasant due to the vitriol. I can't imagine that you are pleased with what has inspired in the town since you brought forth the DJIS and the Form-Based Code. Actions speak louder than words. You say you are listening, yet the directions you give to residents who wish to speak contradict that, and I wanna quote, "Try not to repeat comments made by others." Really, if 1,000 residents want to tell you that they do not want to see four- or five-story buildings in the hamlet, then you need to hear it 1,000 times. If 1,000 residents tell you that they do not want to see development past the post office on North Greeley, then you need to hear it 1,000 times. And how did this false narrative about affordable housing come to be? My concerns about the DJIS and Form-Based Code have nothing to do with that. And I'm stunned by all your contention with the Chappaqua Central School District. There should be another public hearing once the school board releases their findings. I have written previously about my personal concerns about the self-serving members of the working committee, and you have my concerns in writing going back to the comprehensive plan. You were elected to serve the residents of this town, not outside consultants and interests. The town needs to come together. It's unfortunate that when the pandemic and New York pause began, you didn't heed the request of town residents and paused this proposal. Please do that now and plan a sureet post-pandemic, which it now appears you have neglected to do. It's time to do the right thing. People will respect you if you have the courage to stop this and start over. I know that I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. And I would suggest that the trauma is not only on the one side, but on both. The next person with their hand raised is Erica Bart.
Erica, please unmute yourself.
Hi, it's actually Michael Rudnick. I'm Erica Bart's husband. Hi, everyone. Thanks for, thanks for hearing me. I'm new to the town. I live at nine Turtleback Way. Appreciate everyone's service, so I'm new to all of this. I guess my question for the board, which I guess you, I heard you don't have to answer, is obviously what's being proposed is quite controversial. And I would think that, you know, 1,000 or so people live here, why not let everyone vote on it? If you are our representatives, why not let, put it to a vote for the residents of the town and see what they wanna do? So if that's been done, I apologize. But I would think something as transformative and controversial as what you're proposing should be put to the, of the actual residents to see what they decide. And then everyone can shut up if people want this, and if they don't, then it shouldn't happen. That's all.
Thanks, Michael. You know, I'm gonna ask our attorney, Nick Ward-Willis, just to briefly address this. This has been discussed at previous hearings, but for those who who didn't attend one of those, Nick, if you can just go over the issue with regard to a public referendum or public vote.
Certainly. So it's also, I believe, up on the town's website, we had prepared a short response to that because it had been raised a couple of times. Under New York state law, the town does not have the ability to submit the zoning legislation up for a public vote. It's not allowed. It's been a couple of controllers' decision cases on that matter. The town board has that discretion to decide these matters and cannot delegate its authorities on matters like zoning or other local laws to the, to the public. That's not to be confused with the referendum that is permitted for the sale of town property. There's also another issue as addressed. In those cases, for the sale of town property, the municipality has the ability to submit that pursuant to state law to a public vote, as well as the public themselves have the right to get a petition going and submit it for the, for referendum. But as far as the legislation itself, the town board is without the authority to submit it to the voters.
Thanks, Nick. And again, that, that sort of decision and memo from town council is available on the website, chappacquaforward.org. Pam, the next person with their hand raised, Jennifer Louis-June.
Yes, please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Louis-June, and I am a five-year resident of the town of Newcastle. And I'd like to submit my comments, which I will also do in writing. I am very concerned about the Form-Based Code, and I don't think it's the right tool for development in our town, and it's certainly not the right answer for increasing diversity. My main concern with the Form-Based Code is that I believe it's derived from a flawed process, and in its current iteration, the Form-Based Code is being falsely equated to encouraging diversity. When in fact, the Form-Based Code is undermining the most diverse section of town, of housing in our town. I am deeply concerned about all of the people who would face displacement as the result of the Form-Based Code. I would like to know if there's been any outreach to seniors, non-English-speaking communities, and to those in the hamlet who already live in affordable housing options. What you have, some have called a vocal minority opposing the Form-Based Code could very well be a majority, if only more residents were aware of what's happening. The entire reason you kept these sessions open was that you had over 300 public comments on this issue, as more people have become aware. Most of those comments are in opposition to this process. Some on the town board have derided residents for putting out information and sending out flyers. You can't both call your own residents bullies and call drawings taken directly from your own consultant's reports fake news, while at the same time saying you're listening with open hearts and open minds. In these calls, I hear so much about the DGIS, but the information is presented at a very high level. Will the board be reaching out in language that non-experts can understand so that all residents can be aware of the Form-Based Code's potential impacts on the hamlet? We, the residents of the town of Newcastle, should be the backbone of any initiative, and instead, we feel that we are being treated as an obstacle. You say that no one wants the Max build out, but how is the town board ensuring this doesn't happen? I've read a lot of the public comments that have been, have been submitted, and we're concerned, your residents are concerned about being left out of this process. I ask that the town board take the following steps to ensure that any rezoning of the hamlet reflect the will of its residents by, one, delaying a final vote or passage of the Form-Based Code until the community and its important stakeholders, like the Board of Education, the library, and merchants, can come together to decide what we want for our town. Two, letting residents know as soon as possible if parts of the Form-Based Code are truly off the table and not being are truly off the table and not being considered by the consultants. And three, considering removing all town land from the form-based code before moving forward. Lastly, COVID has changed the world. Will the form-based code include new data and information based on how our lives have changed and continue to evolve? Or will we be building a Chappaqua for a lifestyle that doesn't exist anymore? Our town deserves a plan that promotes the shared vision of its many diverse residents. We need to build a Chappaqua for the future. And I believe with the little patience and true community input, we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person with their hand raised is Ed Frank.
Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Ed Frank, New Statley, 35-year resident. The DGIS form-based code as written is something I would have expected the consultants to propose 10 years ago. I base that upon the DGIS pretext of feet on the street resulting in more support for local retail businesses. It should have been self-evident to the consultants that due to online sales, what was factual 10 years ago is no longer applicable. For example, Sears and Macy's stores located in the Galleria Mall in White Plains are in the process of closing, even though the mall is located in a densely populated area with plenty of feet on the street. A shopping mall located in Newburgh recently was described as a dying mall and is being repurposed as a casino. After living in Chappaqua for five years, President Bill Clinton said it best, and I agree with his assessment. And these are the same reasons that the vast majority of families moved to Chappaqua, coupled with the Chappaqua Central School District. President Clinton wrote, quote, "Newcastle's inhabitants reflect the social, political, and religious diversity of America with new immigrants from Latin America, Asia, and Africa, living and working with people whose families have been here for generations. However, in spite of all the changes, the town retains the feel of an earlier era and its traditional values. Hillary and I like living here, a place where past and present meet. The overwhelming hundreds of Chappaqua-forward public comments on the town website agree with President Clinton's assessment and are in favor of Chappaqua retaining its small hamlet traditional values. Four and five-story buildings are wrong for our small hamlet. The present zoning code of three stories is quite sufficient. Thank you."
Thank you, Ed. The next person with their hand raised is Ben Herman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Ben.
Hi, my name is Ben Herman. I live at 10 North Place, nine-plus-year resident of Chappaqua. Thank you for your continued willingness to listen to residents through these public hearings. Goal number 26 of the 2017 Comprehensive Plan ends with the following regarding parking. As part of the revitalization, additional parking should be provided in the Chappaqua hamlet in proximity to businesses and amenities. This is a great goal, because I think we'd all agree parking was a problem then and is still a problem today. What I find troubling is that the form-based code proposals regarding parking would do the opposite and provide less parking, not more. For example, parking ratios are significantly reduced, with merchant-required parking cut by more than 50% for most merchants and by 25% for restaurants. On top of these reduced ratios, the parking toolbox will make the situation even worse as it allows for off-site parking up to a quarter mile away and payments in lieu of providing actual parking spaces. How will the 90-plus percent of us who drive instead of walking to the hamlet find parking? The new ratios are based on a handbook that runs in direct conflict with both observed conditions in Chappaqua and in direct conflict with the comprehensive plan. So my request is that in order to be consistent with the goal of the comprehensive plan, that parking ratios revert back to current levels and that the parking toolbox be eliminated. The challenge, then, is what can be developed? It's likely a few sites, including the former Rite Aid site and the former Lutheran Church site, which I've been advocating we focus on for some time. These properties can be redeveloped via special permit or traditional variances. A form-based code is not appropriate nor logical for a hamlet if only three or four properties can be redeveloped. It will create a false sense of developer entitlement and lead to numerous variance requests and lawsuits. Let's focus on allowing for thoughtful development on the limited number of properties that are both vacant and large enough to be redeveloped with onsite parking. We can work together with developers to create more than 10% affordable components on these limited sites through government programs and development incentives. We can create diversity of housing and bring in lower-income residents faster than under the form-based code. Many problems related to traffic, student counts, and the groundswell of resident opposition to the form-based code might be eliminated if we focus on this alternative, limited plan for growth. It could be a win for everyone. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ben. The next person with their hand raised is Scott and Natalia Levine.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Scott Levine, 149 King. I'd like to speak about the architectural rendering on the mailer that residents received a few days ago, which a lot of residents tell me they found pretty jarring. This 3D model was prepared by the towns professionals under a contract that called for a model to illustrate the likely maximum development and provide the basis for the number of new apartments. A town board member recently wrote to residents that the probability of the amount of new development shown could be 0%. And anyway, the town board doesn't want it. I mean, I don't really care who wants what. I don't. What I care about is the effects that your actions will have, which will remain with us for many decades. The 3D model cost the public tens of thousands of dollars. And the town board has since reviewed and accepted the work. We've heard that it's been called fake news, but nowhere in previous discussions was there ever any suggestion that it's inaccurate or only to be viewed from a faraway distance. This model was first presented nearly two years ago. But now town board members are writing on social media that the model is somehow a false depiction. That's not what the professionals were instructed to do. Their contract required faithful adherence to the letter of the code. And until now, the town board has represented that the model shows precisely that. On parking garages, the code proposes allowing developers to pay the town to build multi-story garages on public land, with the only restriction on their height that they can't be taller than the buildings next to them. The code encourages consolidation of small properties into mega blocks with large parking garages. I'm sorry we disagree, but I don't find it credible for anyone to now ask the community to ignore the 3D model. My final point is that I don't understand why Ms. Poole has said that the town envisions holding a charrette in the future to develop the community vision for public land, but not for the neighborhood where hundreds of highly diverse residents live, where merchants run their businesses, where children attend school at Bell, et cetera. So I'll finish a little bit earlier than my full three minutes. Maybe you can briefly explain why you propose not to hold a design charrette to guide rezoning of the majority of a hamlet that isn't public land? Thank you very much.
I just want to remind everyone that the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to discuss the form-based code and the draft generic environmental impact statement, not to talk about conversations that are happening on social media and not to offer comments about mailers that have been done by external groups with information that is not included in form-based code or the DGIS. So if we can please focus our comments this evening on the purpose of this public hearing, that would be greatly appreciated.
Ivy, if I can just respond, because he just quoted me and misquoted me, so I want to make sure that the right quote is out there. I responded to many residents and some variation of this, but I put in in one of my emails or many of my emails, "Right or wrong, any municipality is required to create such imagery, whether the likelihood of occurring is close to 100% or less than zero. Simply, neither the town board nor residents want a half a dozen exposed garages, even if we could actually grow anywhere near that side. Rest assured, that in the months to come, you will recraft and amend the code based not only on our own analysis, but that of our consultants and residents. So it's important, if you're going to make a statement or quote me on something, that it's done accurately. Thank you."
Thanks. The next person with their hand raised is Andrea San Severino-Galan.
You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Andrea San Severino-Galan. I live at Tothe Lane in Chappaqua. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak again this evening about the form-based code. I'm speaking tonight to amplify some of the core issues I and the vast majority of more than 450 residents who have submitted written comments are concerned about regarding the form-based code. As we continue to navigate the sharp vicissitudes of COVID-19, there is no justification for enacting a public policy tool of this magnitude, a wholesale rezoning of the Chappaqua hamlet at this time. Moreover, the absence of a professional charrette and resident consensus will effectively nullify whatever eventual outcome you are determined to pass. It is the duty of the town board to proactively seek input from all residents, especially those who do not typically participate, so that they may contribute their creative ideas, and we can build a shared vision based on collective values in a positive collaborative spirit. Not only those who are courageous enough to voice their opinions in public and risk retribution from those who disagree, and what we all recognize has become a devastatingly toxic discourse. Secondly, there are intractable issues with the form-based code itself. It is a disproportionate public policy zoning tool, unnecessary, and ill-suited for a hamlet of our size and character and the nature of our attractiveness to developers. A form-based code is typically reserved for communities where there is a lack of resident activism or it is a challenge to attract developers to. There will be massive displacement of current residents in the hamlet, who are precisely those from these diverse socioeconomic backgrounds and communities the FBC falsely purports to serve. There has been no comprehensive examination or release of information on the inevitable tax increases and negative economic impact on single-family homeowners. The Board of Education has yet to release a final analysis of the impact of building 1,000 new units on school enrollment. And there has been misrepresentation of their preliminary findings in an effort to support the current FBC. In addition, there are deep flaws in the DGIS itself, which further invalidates the proposed FBC legislation. The impact of COVID-19 was never contemplated in this design, nor have we begun to normalize yet post-COVID-19 to understand what the world of work, commuting, housing, and retail needs and opportunities may be. We, as residents, would like to ensure Newcastle is in a position to be nimble and innovative as we navigate our world post-COVID. Newcastle residents are among the greatest assets in this community. We have access to a wealth of experience, knowledge, and viewpoints by our neighbors. And we need to leverage its rich diversity of expertise and opinions through a professionally-led community charrette dedicated to determining the right public policy tools to achieve a positive shared vision for Newcastle based on our collective values, which include greater diversity and greater numbers of affordable housing and an innovative and exciting future for anyone who wants to live here. We implore you to uphold responsible governance and to fulfill your duty to actively listen to residents and to act in our collective interest, especially since you are hearing the same concerns over and over and over. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. The next person with their hand raised is Erica Bart. Did we already have Erica Bart? I'm sorry.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. You want them back again or for a second round?
We had her husband. Is it her husband or is it maybe it's her?
We won't know. Okay, Erica Bart.
Sorry, it's her husband again. If I'm not allowed to speak twice, I'll stop, but.
Yeah, no, we've really only been allowing people one bite of the apple here.
Sure.
Got a lot of people with their hands raised.
Understood. I should give other people an opportunity. Thanks.
The the next person with their hand raised is.
Motif Tepper.
Thank you.
Yeah. Motif Tepper, please unmute yourself.
Okay, mine's just a household speech. The voices of the people submitting the reports to you have been cutting in and out. And so I'm missing, I'm sure other people have too, kind of large portions of what they've been saying. So I don't know what's responsible for this, but I thought I'd tell you. That's all. Have you heard me?
Yeah, I've been hearing. No one's cut out for me.
No, not for not for me either. So it may be a connection on your.
Could be. Okay, great. If no one else has the problem, forget it. Thank you.
The next person with their hand raised is Maeve Tur.
Maeve, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
So actually, this is John Barone. So I'm also at the firm of Tur and Barone. Maeve Tur is my partner. So good evening. My name is John Barone. And I'm legal counsel representing Residents United to Save Chappaqua Hamlet. As you may be aware, we intend on submitting written comments by the close of the common period in 30 days. I'm taking the opportunity tonight to raise certain issues not addressed when my firm last presented to the board. Public notice and opportunity has become a familiar topic of this review process, and for good reason. As we appear to be nearing the end of the common period, anticipate the town feels that this point in time it provided sufficient opportunity for comments on the form-based code. However, a zoning code transformation of this complexity demands a nuanced approach to enhancing and enabling public participation. The form-based code is is a legacy project for generations to come. Thus, it should be a shining example of what Newcastle can become, not what the community does not want it to be. Thus, accepting the public input is not a mere rote exercise. The process for an appropriately enacted FBC should flow from the community organically developing content rather than presenting a finished product and requesting input. Therefore, we are seeking tonight a commitment from the board to reopen a public hearing and common period after the board closes the current common period and reviews and incorporates the public input received. This occurring before the board proceeds with the process to an FGIS, which we feel would be premature at this point. We also feel that after the town finalizes the secret process, there may likely be additional need for public input. And the town should also commit to more public input processes at that time. There are accepted planning methods for building a community consensus within an appropriate timeline. With regard to the current FBC proposal, this version must undergo substantive revisions based upon the comments already received. The revised FBC proposal must then be provided again to the community for further input through hearings and written comment. This is a reciprocal process between the residents and the town to facilitate ample public input on multiple versions of the proposal before a final determination can be made regarding the product. The more review that this proposal undergoes, the more questions have come to the surface. We continue to identify secret issues. And the DGIS needs to have additional information to effectively address the concerns of the community and allow for an adequate review of those issues. We look forward to the town accepting the obligations of incorporating the public's comments and creating a code that fits for the hamlet of Chappaqua and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. I'm not sure if you missed the statement that I made at the beginning of the public hearing when we opened this evening. I would encourage you to go back and listen to the process that we outlined. There are other opportunities for public comment, and there will be additional public hearings before the town board takes any vote to adopt the form-based code. Nick, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I do, Ivy. So we've discussed this. I think it's been outlined previously that tonight, the town board is considering closing the public hearing in the DGIS. And as we've explained a number of times, there's a dual path here. One is the review of the secret component, the other is the zoning component. And of course, as you've indicated before, the zoning component will continue. There may well, and we've discussed at work sessions, may well be will be changes to the form-based code, and that would require continuation of a public hearing. So what the prior speaker said is already being actually enunciated and announced and agreed to by the board. So that's all been addressed previously.
Thank you. The next person with their hand raised is Mark Friedman. And Mr. Friedman, just before you get started, just to remind everybody, when you speak, if you can, please let us know your address, if you're local. if you're local and your organization, if you're here representing. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. My name is Mark Friedman. My wife and I live at 50 Carolyn Place in Chappaqua and I'm not representing anybody other than the two of us, I suppose. We are recent movers to the area. We've been living in New York City and then COVID came along and like many, many other people, we fled the city to try to find a place that was greener, more rural and that yet was commutable into town if we needed to get there. And so we are new to the entire area and also new to this controversy, which I gather has been going on for some time. I thought it might be helpful to just provide a little bit of a perspective, if it's relevant to the members of the board, from somebody like us who has kind of just come here and is trying to get their hands around what seems like a fairly significant change to the center of the community. And I have to say, our reaction to it was quite negative. We are not generally sort of anti-development. We are certainly generally inclined towards being in favor of fair housing and diversity. We support local businesses and having a vibrant community in town so that we don't need to go to other towns to shop, to have community, to interact with people, especially when that again becomes possible after COVID ends. But at least the maximum development allowed under the plan would be, I think frankly, a really massive change to the town. And it would change it, I believe, or there's a very good chance that it will change it in ways that we wouldn't welcome and weren't reasons or inconsistent with our reasons sort of for moving here as opposed to other towns in the area. And so I confess that I don't have the full background. I haven't, you know, been dug in on a position on any of this. But I, I do have to say that if there are other people like me who haven't been focused on the issue and who are just thinking about the desirability of living in this town and what this might do to it, I do believe there might be a really substantial number of people out there in this town who are very opposed to it. And so I, I just think that it's very hard to sort of sit in, it's very hard to get connection to people these days in general. In many ways that we normally had it, speaking at the coffee shop, bumping into each other in town, just aren't available anymore. But I, I think that it would behoove everybody to proceed with great caution, even though it's very frustrating once you've already spent two or three years developing a process and have gotten, you know, there's a lot of momentum behind it. So I just wanted to kind of lend my voice as a newcomer of support to the idea that this doesn't seem like a great idea from what I know about it. And I do think there may be many, many others out there like us who also have great skepticism about it. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Mark. The next person with their hand raised is Suzanne Chason.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Okay. Um, I just have, I think it'll be under three minutes, my remarks probably. The residents of Newcastle.
Suzanne, I'm sorry, if you can just remember to state your address.
Oh, sorry. Suzanne Chason and I live here in Chappaqua on Ludlow Drive. The residents of Newcastle do not want the FBC. I think that's no longer in contention at this point. I think we can see that by the hundreds of public comments, the thousands of signatures on the anti-FBC petition and the many new voices here this evening, including some that may have initially not even been able to get in because the system crashed initially. Yet, instead of responding to the will of those who elected them, myself included, the town board seems to have dug in, labeling the opposition on their own website as fear-mongering. In short, the board is treating our community like a private fiefdom and its constituents as obstacles, in my opinion. This is particularly troubling since the board has shown every indication to vote the FBC in before the end of 2021. This despite the fact that one current board member was an appointee, never elected by the people, and two of the five current board members are planning to step down after this year. What does that have to say about the board's long-term commitment to its own policies? To the residents who will have to live with this fallout if the people who brought this in are running out? Given these troubling issues, I call on the board to do four things. First of all, immediately remove the public lands from any change in zoning. You don't need your consultants to do this. It's common sense. Public lands should be for public good only, not private development. And until such a time as broad community consensus on those lands can be achieved in person, they should not be subject to the whim of a few elected officials who don't even plan to stick around. Number two, hold another public hearing on the DG EIS after the school board has come back with this final report and residents have had at least a week to digest it. Our schools are the backbone of our community and our residents deserve to have all the information at their disposal before the DG EIS comment period closes. Plus, many residents tried to get on this evening and were initially stymied. We don't even know if some of them gave up entirely. So I am calling on the board to add another public hearing and to include another 30-day comment period after that hearing. Number three, I ask and I call on the board to delay any vote on the FBC until 2022, thus allowing the residents to decide in the next election through their choice of candidates, whether this is a plan that needs to go forward, be amended or be scrapped in favor of a restart of community engagement once COVID is over. And number four, I say that I would like the board to use the remainder of 2021 instead to explore ways to keep the planning board involved in a future remaking of the town, perhaps by streamlining steps to make it easier for businesses such as restaurants to open. I would also like to see the town board appoint a stakeholder committee who have no financial interest in any development to explore ways to revitalize the community post-COVID, whether through new programming, new business initiatives or other ways to put feet on the street. Please remember that you, as a town board, represent the community, not your own ideologies and not your political ambitions. That's what good government is about, serving the people. All right, please just do the right thing and.
Thank you.
Mutual trust. Thank you.
I just want to address that quickly as one of the two town board members who won't be serving after this year. Earlier this month, I posted information about my reasons for not seeking reelection, which have nothing to do with the Form-Based Code and everything to do with the fact that I lost my son last year and to characterize my service to this community, which I have fought to continue to serve through unimaginable grief as anything less than devotion to this community is hugely offensive and I won't stand for it. And in addition, I would just add that Lauren Levin, who also will not be seeking election next year and who was appointed by the town board, is someone who's had the courage to run for office and who has tirelessly served this community. And for us to denigrate her service and to imply that her vote is somehow less than is also unacceptable and I won't stand for it. Thank you.
Ivy, I'd also like to respond to Suzanne's comments. First off, thank you so much for saying that, Ivy, because everything that you have said is utterly fair and straightforward. Secondly, I was the third largest vote getter in this, in the last election and I was appointed because of my track record and the dedication and time that I've put towards this position. And lastly, Suzanne, if I remember correctly, when we spoke on the phone, you voted for me. You told me that you voted for me. So I don't understand how all of a sudden you're on this public call in front of 126 people telling everyone that my vote doesn't matter. I don't get it. Thank you.
We'll take the next person with their hand raised. David Fisher.
Please unmute yourself.
David Fisher, 11 Upland Drive. I was intending to be very brief to say first of all that growth for growth's sake is not a public good. It might be if you're a New York Stock Exchange-listed company and your investors see their wealth increase because the company has increased its revenue and profits. But that doesn't go for a municipality. Just having more population and more tax revenue is not by itself a good thing. And so to the extent that that's the motivation here, I believe it to be a, a false one. Secondly, there's the notion of externalities and that is where people who are not profiting or benefiting from an economic action are the ones that pay for it. And that's the case here where real estate developers will make profits on a, a reduction in the attractiveness of this, of this town to those who moved here for the very reasons of its size and and its absence of population density. Increasing the population density by building apartment buildings and and, and, and by, by increasing the, the density of the population as opposed to the acre zoning we have for new population now really allows the, the real estate investors to profit off of the detriment of quality of life of those who have moved here. So that's it. I just don't think this is, that, 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 that a, a change of this magnitude is fair to the people that have moved here to, to avoid exactly what the, this development would, would, would create.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. The next person with their hand raised is Ralph Gomeroy.
Please unmute yourself.
Okay. Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, I have been a resident here for roughly 40 years. And I was completely taken by surprise and quite unaware of the activities of this, of this new type, of this new rezoning and all the letters that you used, right? I think you have done a stunningly inadequate job of getting people to know what is happening. None, none of the people I know knew either. And so I, I basically think you just should start over and see what the community wants. You have not done it and you should not determine the future of the community without a real consultation in which people know what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomeroy. The next person with their hand raised is Sid Falkson.
Great. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, Sid Falkson, almost six-year resident, 97 Crossridge Road. My comments tonight are related to your consideration around closing the public hearing this evening. At the first three public hearings, Supervisor Poole laid out two determining factors for the public hearing to remain open. Number one, the number of comments received and speakers heard. And number two, the presentation of new questions and comments received and, and sorry, and number two, the presentation of new questions and comments. Both of those criteria have been met and I request that the public hearing be kept open accordingly. As to criteria one, there have been 118 public comments submitted since the last public hearing on 1/19. That is a 247% increase in comments after the prior December hearing over the same period of time. Public awareness and engagement is continuing to accelerate. By closing the hearing today, you will further marginalize residents' role in this process. It should be your wish to hear from as many residents as possible. As to criteria two, there continues to be new questions about the environment, parking and conflicts of interest. And the largest and in my opinion, most important stakeholder, after residents, of course, the CCSD Board of Education, has yet to issue its final analysis. Further, that pending analysis and the ability for residents to react to it during the public hearing was the town board's justification for keeping the public hearing open until today. To close the hearing without first satisfying the reason it was kept open is deceitful. The only reason residents and the press have been given by the town board to justify closing the public hearing is their desire for their consultants to begin answering questions. Respectfully, process and timelines are a woefully inadequate reason to disenfranchise constituents. Please extend the public hearing. And I think it's a first for me to end under three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person with their hand raised is Dora Strauss.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, we can.
Hi, I actually, I made it back in time. The hearing's still going on. I, Dora Strauss, 7 Breckenridge Road. I just wanted to read into the record what I submitted by letter because I think it's important. And it just, and I have made a lot of comments in the past and I'm, I'm just going to focus on the BOE tonight. At the January 19th, 2021 public hearing, the town board agreed to keep the public hearings on the DG EIS, DG EIS, open until the Board of Education submits its report in connection with its consultant's work on the Form-Based Code proposal, specifically an analysis of the potential effect of the proposed rezoning on school enrollment capacity and the annual budget. In keeping the public hearings open, the town board recognized the importance of allowing residents the time and opportunity to digest and publicly comment upon the BOE's ultimate report. As town board members, you have noted that you are also parents with children in the CCSD and therefore recognize that the impact of the proposed Form-Based Code zoning on our schools is indeed a paramount concern. I very much appreciate your comments in this regard. It is critical that we receive the BOE's input, given that issues of increased enrollment capacity and school budget in turn affect the quality of children's education as well as residents' taxes. Numerous residents have criticized the estimated increase in school population figures arrived at not only by the town's consultants in the DG EIS, but also by the BOE's consultants, as reflected in the latter's January 13th slide presentation. After this presentation, residents raised pointed criticisms directly with the BOE, including but not limited to, A, the fact that the BOE consultants failed to examine actual local data, i.e. the number of schoolchildren currently living in multifamily developments in Newcastle, and therefore did not arrive at a realistic multiplier. And B, in determining capacity, the BOE consultants used the maximum permissible teacher-student ratio, ignoring the fact that current class size ratios are actually smaller than the permissible maximum. The BOE has stated that it is reviewing and analyzing its consultant's work product and will make a written submission to the town board. Again, it is critical that the public receives the BOE's analysis before the public hearings on the DG EIS are closed. Accordingly, I ask the town board to not close the public hearings tonight. Please keep the public hearings on the DG EIS open until the BOE submits its report, allowing 30 days thereafter for the public to review the report and submit written comments. Thank you for your continuing efforts to take public concerns and comments into account.
Thank you.
Jensey, Jensey Liu.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, that's great. I have two quick comments. The first one, oh, sorry. Jensey Liu, 1138 Oak Hill Road, Chappaqua, New York. Having a six-year resident. So I wrote an open letter to a town board and hoping that a town board that can work with the Board of Education, open letter. And I really appreciate the effort the town board has been showing to work with the town board through multiple meetings and the work sessions. And at this moment, Supervisor Ivy mentioned that the Board of Education is saying that the report will be ready very soon. So why not just wait for 10 more days? We have been very patient so far. So I hope that we have a, a positive conclusion on this issue. And we're almost there. Just wait a few more days. That's the first issue. And the second issue, there was a question raised about a referendum. So I think before people raised the issue about non-binding referendum, I just wonder if the town board has done any legal analysis regarding the issue and what, and I just wonder what are the findings is. Sometimes it seems to me, the discussion seems to focus on whether the town board has the authority to do certain things. Now hopefully. Now hopefully, and unsurprisingly, each side thinks he or she is in the majority. Actually, we could not know if there's any way that the Town Board can survey the public opinion from the residents, either through a non-binding referendum or other mechanism, before making a final decision. I think it would be a good effort to bring the community together. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lou. The next person with their hand raised, Tara Castle.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Tara Castle, Seven Hilltop Circle. To echo what many have implored this evening, I'd really like to thank the Town Board for extending the public comment period. And I really hope you continue to do so. It's just so important to ensure that residents have access to the critical information we need to effectively analyze the DGEIS, most notably the final results of the CCSD analysis regarding the impact of the Form-Based Code on our schools. We should not rush this process along to the detriment of our community. Like the hundreds of residents that have expressed their concerns regarding the potential for massive development, unfettered construction, and unpredictable outcomes from which we can never turn back the clock, I feel strongly that we need to get this right for the good of our community. We must have a collaborative process to generate a detailed design plan that reflects the needs of the community, one that goes beyond the limitations of merely commenting on the environmental impacts of a predetermined solution. In addition to specifics regarding the DGEIS, I'd like to inquire what led to the election of a Form-Based Code approach to developing our hamlet. I believe the objectives of our community for a revitalized downtown, housing diversity, and cohesive aesthetics could have been achieved through amending the existing zoning law, ensuring that the town continues to hold the reins rather than ceding control to for-profit developers, including some of those who made up the Downtown Working Group and helped create the current approach. Form-Based Code is a method frequently used by communities that are in need of revitalization and hope to attract development. It's atypical in a town such as Chappaqua to enact a Form-Based Code. In addition, we continue to hear that the Form-Based Code is not a construction plan, but it is most certainly a development plan. I've said it before, but again, having seen firsthand how development transpires, I repeat, if you zone it, developers will come. Chappaqua is a highly desirable location, and developers are absolutely waiting with bated breath to see if you pass this legislation, no doubt in awe of their unbelievable good fortune. As we've seen, many parcels in town are already for sale. We will have no control over the pace of construction, nor its impact on our community, merchants, and schoolchildren. In addition to the important and critical work of creating an inclusive community, the Town Board should be focused on ensuring any future development strengthens our community with outcomes that make Newcastle economically, environmentally, and socially viable over the long term. At a moment when the future of New York City and its ability to attract and retain a strong business environment is indeed in question, it certainly does not seem prudent to approve a drastic rezoning, one that has the potential to create hardship for current residents of the hamlet, small local businesses, and increased tax liabilities for single-family homeowners, to the point which their homes decline in value and the town's overall marketability would be in question. So in the spirit of creating a more resilient Newcastle, I ask the Town Board to not only evaluate the impacts of your proposed Form-Based Code, but to evaluate alternatives that meet the objectives of the community in a measured and thoughtful approach. You have the opportunity to create an incredible legacy for our town that will live on for generations. I remain hopeful that you are indeed listening with open hearts and open minds, and that you have the courage to change direction, if needed, for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person with their hand raised, Margaret Ferguson.
Good evening. I am speaking tonight as President of Residents United to save Chappaqua Hamlet. Since the Board of Education statement is not ready, of course, there should be an additional public hearing. Of course, it is a matter of great interest in this town, and we are entitled to have the hearing kept open so that whoever wants to speak to that statement whenever it's released may do so publicly and may also listen to what others have to say about it. In addition, as Sid Falkson pointed out, public involvement in the hearings is radically expanding. Please do the right thing. Please continue the public hearing until a reasonable time after the Board of Education statement is released. Aside from the foregoing requests, tonight I only have brief comments pertaining to the obvious conflicts of interest in what Ronnie Diamondstein aptly called the self-serving Downtown Working Group, which wrote the Form-Based Code before us today. That group included two local developers who own property in Chappaqua Hamlet and an architect who works for one of the developers. Those individuals were intimately involved in every step of the Downtown Working Group's development of the Form-Based Code. You know who had no role in writing the Form-Based Code? Key stakeholders like the CCSD, the Fire Department and EMS, seniors, empty nesters, local merchants, residents from often underrepresented or marginalized groups, residents who are climate change activists or advocates for the environment, for inclusivity and diversity, for enhanced green building standards, for sports and the arts, and residents with no particular focus other than they have something to say about the place they have chosen to call home. None of their voices gave rise to the code. However, the integrity of the Form-Based Code was destroyed because individuals who own land in Chappaqua Hamlet and who thus stand to directly benefit from lucrative development helped to write that very law. Moreover, their impact was all the more pronounced because ordinary residents and other key stakeholders, as I just mentioned, played absolutely no role. It is highly objectionable that the town allowed this situation to happen, but since the town did, this board, this board must recognize that the Form-Based Code is indelibly tainted. Accordingly, the only correct course is to definitively put the Form-Based Code on hold. New York State Courts have declared local laws complete nullities due to far less obvious conflicts of interest than the one here. Two additional short comments. I ask this board to go back and listen to the statement by our Councilor, John Barone, because from Ivy and Nick's comments after John spoke, I believe the two of you missed at least one of his main points. I also want to assure the community that the postcards you have received from our Not-for-Profit Group relate to the topic of tonight's meeting, the Form-Based Code and the build-out shown in the Town's DGEIS, and indeed are completely accurate. They reflect the work of the town's own consultants. Statements to the contrary are not true. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Before we move on, I just want to say a quick word about the Downtown Working Group. The Downtown Working Group helped to provide strategic guidance to the town and input on the drafting of the Form-Based Code using the comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty seventeen, which specifically mentions a Form-Based Code. The Downtown Working Group met several times in twenty nineteen and just once in January of twenty twenty, and it has not met since that time. The Downtown Working Group did not write the Form-Based Code. This group, the Downtown Working Group, included three members of the Planning Board, all five members of the Town Board who are elected to represent the people of this community, and also included two local property owners and one local architect. Much has been made, including by this previous commenter, of the fact that these three members, two who are developers and an architect, had some sort of agenda that was not in the best interests of this community. I've received emails from people who have claimed that our plan was sponsored by real estate developers who have an interest in gaining from the Form-Based Code and those who work for them. I've also had emails from people who said, here's a quote, "The creation of this code by a group that included developers with vested interests is patently and astonishingly corrupt." I want to say a word about these three people who served on our Downtown Working Group and recognize them for their service to our community. Randy Ketchus, he's a local real estate developer who's lived in Chappaqua for over twenty-five years, although I heard he recently moved. I'm not sure about that. Randy is a former member of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. He had four kids come up through the system. He's a local guy. Steve Tavolachi, he's also a resident of Chappaqua. He grew up in Newcastle. He was raised here. And he's the president of Tavo Development. Ninety-one Bedford Road was actually their first commercial development. And yes, he owns property in town. Bill Spade, he's a local architect. He's a Chappaqua resident. He's been involved with projects, both professionally and as a volunteer, including professionally working on ninety-one Bedford Road. And along with his wife, Kaiko, he has generously donated his time and talents to the Fuller Center for Housing for the passive house rehabilitation that's happened at three hundred King Street. These residents, Randy and Steve and Bill, these are members of our own community who donated their time and talents to helping us to craft a Form-Based Code that would meet the strategic goals of the community and spur redevelopment of the hamlet, which is the goal that we're after here, after all. We needed their expertise and the guidance of people like them who have skin in the game to be able to ensure that what we were proposing was actionable. So I understand that you may object to the process by which the Town Board came up with the Form-Based Code, but I do not think it's fair to dissmudge the reputation of these three individuals who donated their time to the town to help us to draft the Form-Based Code. Thank you. We'll take the next person with their hand raised, and that's Sarah Shapiro.
Sarah, unmute yourself.
Hello. My name is Sarah Shapiro, and I live at twenty-three Smith Street. I have been keeping a close eye on the written comments submitted to the Town Board, and I probably don't need to tell you that they are overwhelmingly opposed to the Form-Based Code. Several residents point to the years of disruption, traffic, disruption and traffic that the infrastructure construction caused. They also implore you to give us a much-needed break from construction projects in the hamlet. As a resident that lives near town, I believe that I personally suffered more than most residents during the infrastructure project. As some of you might remember, I was quite vocal about the fact that much of the work was done at night. It was extremely loud, and it impacted my family's quality of life. So now again, you have residents stepping up and saying, for so many reasons, this zoning change that you are pushing is going to negatively impact our quality of life. You say that you are listening, but I believe there's more that you could be doing. For example, in a recent e-newsletter, the Board requested feedback from the community via an online survey regarding reforms we would like to see in the Newcastle Police Department. I completed that survey, but I cannot understand why a similar survey has not been offered to collect feedback on the draft environmental impact statement. When you look at the comments that have been submitted, you see the same sentiments over and over and over. "I don't want this. This is my town. I've lived here forever. Please stop." While these aren't substantive comments on the DGEIS, they are heartfelt concerns of residents. And I'd like all of you to consider how you would answer these, not technically substantive, but still very valid questions and concerns. I know that you don't technically have to by law, but I really think that you should. That's all.
Thank you, Sarah. The next person with their hand raised simply has the name Observer. So if Observer could identify yourself with your first and last name and your address, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, my name is Mark Frye. I first came to Chappaqua in nineteen fifty-nine, then graduated from Pleasantville High School in nineteen sixty-six. I'm going through, I'm a land use planner by profession, so I'm intimately familiar with Form-Based Codes. And I know the village of Chappaqua very well. I have friends there who asked me to step up and say just a couple of words tonight. First of all, I'm so well impressed with all of the previous speakers. I think they've expressed themselves well and clearly. I noticed from an email this afternoon, you've received over five hundred written comments. And let me emphasize my complete agreement with the comments I've heard tonight and ask you to do exactly what the speakers have asked. It is certainly, we had a police reform process across the country, of course, across New York, I should say. And it's easy enough to reach out to the community, and that's the number one thing. The professionals who come up with the Form-Based Code comment are not the people you need to be listening to. You need to, first of all, stop this process completely, put it on hold, and go ahead and catch up a little bit and reach out to each member of the the Chappaqua residents and find out what they want. It's clear from five hundred comments you've received so far that this is not it. As to the Form-Based Code, it is a code that is per se heavily tilted toward developers. Instead of having the traditional zoning that puts particular uses together in particular places, that requires constraints, it has front yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, height limits, and so forth. That is a code that has served the village and the hamlet of Chappaqua well for nearly half, well, about nineteen fifty-nine. So I would encourage you to be extremely skeptical of the entire concept of Form-Based Code because by removing all of those constraints, what you'll end up with, and I represent developers in this process, I write environmental impact statements. The latest one I did was, you know, two volumes. But at the end of the day, so I'm not anti-development, but I know I'm asked the same question every time. Mark, please tell us, what is the maximum allowed within the zoning and they proceed to build the maximum? If it's a corporate entity, they're required to build the maximum for the benefit of their stockholders and the members of their LLCs. So the whole concept of Form-Based Code is a concept you should scrupulously, in my professional opinion, avoid. And I'll leave it at that. I want, obviously, this is, I'm an outsider, but it's the first time I've dipped into this. And let me give you just before I close.
Mark, if you can wrap it up, please. You are at the end of your three minutes.
Oh, okay, thank you. Well, I think I've said enough. I would say in closing, please do not close the public forum, I'm sorry, the public hearing tonight. Wait until you get that important report from your own school board and continue this conversation. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you have further comments for everybody, you can submit them to chappaquawboard@mynewcastle.org. The next person with their hand raised, Pam, is Eileen Gallagher.
Hello. I just had a couple of comments. I had sent a public comment, and I won't repeat that because people can go and read it. I just wanted to say that I took part in the two thousand and seventeen, I think it was, the community workshops for the town and the plan, the master plan and all. And from what I remember, most everybody, I never even heard the term "Form-Based Code" used. And I went to all the sessions and I sat through the review, the summary of it, and I never even heard the term "Form-Based Code." If I did, I didn't know what on earth it was. It sounds like something innocuous. But the word that kept coming up in that session was bucolic, that so many people were praising the bucolic setting that we are blessed to live in here. And as a matter of fact, I just came across Jeremy when you made a little video when you were running for Town Board again in two thousand and nineteen, and you listed different parts of the Form-Based Code, and you said, "Keeping the town bucolic? Check." And I'd like to know what the definition of bucolic is because obviously people have very different understandings of that term. I also want to say that I too volunteered with the Fuller Center for Housing. From the very first day they broke ground in that, on King Street, three hundred King Street, in January of two thousand and sixteen. And for a long time, until I got injured and could no longer do it, I worked there four days a week volunteering, putting my sweat and effort into building homes for people to afford to be able to live here. And I applaud that effort. Not my effort, I mean, the effort to have affordable housing, I think it's very important. But I also believe that most of the town is disenfranchised with this whole Form-Based Code issue. And I totally agree that when you're sending out surveys, we have so many different ways to do this Survey Monkey, whatever you want to use. If you sent out to every household in this town, and you do have people's emails and you are able to do it, I'm sure that you would see that so many people, there are so many people in this town that are very passionate about this. And it's not that we're evil people that don't want, you know, as some people would indicate that we don't want affordable housing. That is not true in the least. But we chose this town over so many others that we had a choice for because of the bucolic country setting that we had. And to see those And to see those high-rise buildings, um, the depictions that we were not shown until a FOIL request turned them up was totally horrifying to me. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think we've now reached the end of our public comments. I'll give everybody, I'll pause for a second. If there's anybody who's been waiting, feel free to put your hand up. Yep, we got one more. So let's go ahead. We have Gray Williams, our town historian.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, first, uh, I'm town historian. I think it might help the public discussion, uh, if, if one could separate the concept of form-based code from the question of how high the buildings ought to be. It gets confused. Form-based code, that is multi-use, essentially people living and working in the same building, more than one function, is in fact the traditional way. That's the way it used to be. It wasn't until the twentieth century that, um, function-based, uh, zoning came into being. There has always been a few grandfathered buildings with, um, people living above the store, so to speak. And, and in fact, that's, that's the way, that's, that's the tradition. Call it country, call it city, what you will. Uh, the, it would be helpful, I think, in publicly discussing these things to separate that from the issue of building height, which really affects density, to just simply the concept of form-based code, which does not. Okay. Now, I don't want to pile on, because I really wanted to talk about, and I've talked about before, is that the present code, proposed law, has everything in it but the kitchen sink. It has really too much. Um, I've spoken about this before, that I felt that, that, uh, the questions of design really have no place in the zoning code. And, and it seems to have everybody's little pet idea in it. But really, should the zoning code contain a ban on vinyl siding? I mean, come on. Uh, and, um, I hope that the town board can indicate to the people who are drafting this that perhaps it should be carved back to what is really essential for zoning. You have to start there. And I think these questions of design and what you want from the community have to follow from that. You have to establish, you really have to establish zoning first. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Gray, thanks for your comments. I'm going to give everybody one last shot. We, we went through this pretty quickly. So if there's somebody out in the audience who has been dying to speak and hasn't had the opportunity or, or the courage to do it, please feel free to raise your hands. Um, and we're happy to hear your public comments. Okay, we got one more, Pam.
Cynthia Moses? Please unmute yourself.
Yeah, it's Cynthia Moses, um, from the West End. I've been listening with great interest to this drama because I feel in some ways it's the, uh, next drama after the West End drama of the Sunshine Home that the board has had to struggle with and all of the planning zoning boards as well. And I, it makes me very sad. Ivy, the pressure that is on you is, um, you know, unimaginable. The tension in the hamlet of Chappaqua seems, uh, so high. And it, I reflect on what happened in the West End, the number of people who during the Sunshine Home event wanted to secede from Newcastle. And there's, you know that, and there's still a lot of conversation about that because people were genuinely so disturbed. They're, they were the boots on the ground for this part of town and they felt really not heard. And things happened, it might have seemed like it was forever for the town government. But from the community side, when you have, for instance, only a butters, and when you're talking thirty-acre parcels, there are not that many butters who get formal notice that this is brewing, you know, such a big project. It took a long time for the whole community to get involved. And still we didn't manage. And, you know, you have to do what you do as a town government to move, um, programs forward. So I, I just offer that, um, people are suffering so much right now on all sides. And I feel badly about the condition of the West End in terms of how we feel about Chappaqua not understanding us. But to watch Chappaqua not communicate in Chappaqua is even bigger drama. So I, I just suggest there should be a way to come together to, um, hear each other better than what's going on. And I think everyone will benefit from it because these times are brutal. So I, I just offer that for the dilemma that you're all in now. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Cynthia. Oh, we got, we got two more. Okay, we'll, we'll take these two and then we'll, we'll cut it off after that. Uh, we have, uh, Mark Metkoski. Um, Mark, I apologize if I messed up your name.
That's good. Um, I just, uh, thought I'd try and speak up at the end here and say that, first of all, I'm a twenty, almost twenty-three-year resident. Uh, I live by West Orchard School. Um, and, uh, you know, from the beginning of time, uh, of my visits to downtown Chappaqua, other than the streetscapes and some of the roadway changes, very little has changed. And I see towns, uh, you know, villages like Pleasantville, um, really activate. Uh, Armoc, which doesn't even have a train station, you know, which was really no reason to go there when we first moved up here, uh, has really activated. And granted, we are in a pandemic now, that sort of, you know, put things on pause, but that, that'll dissipate, you know, and you guys are focused on sort of the, the five and ten and twenty-year plan. So I, I just think that it would be a shame to, uh, you know, not recognize that our downtown has been stuck in neutral for twenty-five years. And it does need to change. Um, and there are people like me whose kids are going to graduate from high school, um, whose kids used to walk to school at West Orchard, are going to graduate from high school. And, uh, you know, we're, we're probably going to leave, but you know, we might consider staying. I'm, I'm still going to work. I have an office in White Plains. Uh, I think we'll go back there at some point. Um, but you know, we're going to leave because there's really no, nowhere to go. Um, the downtown might be nice. In fact, you know, I was thinking they built a, a bunch of multifamily places in, in Pleasantville. You know, that, that's something that's, you know, potentially appealing as opposed to White Plains. So, you know, form-based code has become like a four-letter word. Um, I think that, you know, listen, I have known Randy Catches for years and those people Ivy you mentioned are all great Chappaqua people, you know, with their hearts in the right place. They may be in the development business. I'm in the real estate business. I'm not in the real estate development business and I haven't done anything in Westchester. But, you know, this has gotten ridiculous. Um, I bet you there's a lot more people out there like me than, um, you would imagine. Maybe it's not a majority, but I think the majority of people in our town, um, if they really thought about it, would like to see some changes to the downtown. And this thing probably has to get re-packaged and rethought. Um, you know, I'm not so sure you should close the hearing right now myself. I think you should hear from the, the school. Uh, I think that's been said and, uh, my time is up. But I just did want to sort of offer my support for progress in, uh, the town of Newcastle and also for you personally, Ivy, and the rest of the board for, you know, you're not doing this out of the goodness of your heart. You're doing this because you care about the community. And, um, you know, there are people out there that support you.
Thanks, Mark. And it's nice to meet you. Uh, the next person with their hand raised, someone I've known for a while, uh, is Ray Sanseverino.
So I'm Ray Sanseverino. I live at sixty-five Carolyn Place. Uh, have yet to meet Mark Friedman, who I understand is my neighbor and spoke earlier today. Uh, tonight, Mark, uh, we'll have to get together. Um, Suzanne Chason, no one, I guess, is allowed to speak again, you know, twice. And, and certainly since Suzanne was not allowed to speak again, I feel like I should speak for her. I know her and I know she likely feels terrible about how you and Lauren took Suzanne's comments. And, and I know they were not intended, uh, to be personal attacks in any way. She was merely pointing out facts that several members of the board were going to be leaving office soon, for whatever reason. Um, and that a vote for new town board members would be, uh, an indication of how the town felt about the, uh, DGIS and the form-based code. Um, um, and I think the fact that I feel like I should speak for her because she cannot speak for herself a second time, you know, is a problem in itself with this whole process. There's no exchange. Uh, we can't hear from you. You answer certain questions, Ivy, that you want to answer. Uh, others you don't. You make comments, um, o- over certain issues and, and others you don't. The fact that I've complained about this before, we have three minutes, is ridiculous. We're talking about, you know, major, uh, uh, changes to, to the town we all live in and love. Uh, and I've been here for forty-three years now. Um, and to have to sum up in, in several hearings of, you know, three minutes each, uh, my thoughts about this form-based code is, you know, it's absurd. It's upsetting. Um, so I just wanted to note that. I also urge you, as, as I think everyone else has, keep this hearing open until, at least after we get the, uh, next report from the Board of Education. Uh, I think the numbers that were presented previously, uh, just seem to me, uh, very low in terms of numbers of students. Um, and I think, you know, we have to give this school board a lot of slack. Uh, you read every day in the papers about how many school districts, uh, are not open, uh, how lawsuits are bounding across the nation to get schools open, the problems of schools being closed, children not being educated properly, how we're thought properly, how we're falling behind. And yet, Chappaqua schools are open for in-person learning and it's magnificent that our kids can have the opportunity to go to school. Um, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The, well, we've got one more, Pam. Let's go ahead and take this person. Seth Kraglich.
Yes, hi. How are you? Um, can you hear me okay?
Hi, Sophia. We can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for having me on tonight. Thanks for taking the time. I appreciate it a lot. And I, I will not repeat what other people have said since it's already late and you got to me last. I just, I thought I, because I didn't raise my hand until the last second, not, not in a year. Um, so I want to respond to one of the comments that just came in though, because this has been one of my concerns. I noticed in the library's letter, the library mentioned that, and, and this is one of my concerns here about tax breaks. So the, the linchpin of the DGIS, if you look at page one, one dash two and one dash eleven, is that this development is going to increase the tax base. And all the new tax base is going, and that money is going to pay for the additional services. The library's letter indicated though that the developers can seek tax incentives and pilot agreements, things like that. And that the developers can get the tax incentives and the tax breaks from the county. And so if they do this and get it from the county, then the town board has no say. So even if you didn't want the developers to get these tax breaks, they'll still get the tax breaks for, let's say, up to fifteen years from the county. And to me, that's a concern because if you look at this plan, this is not an affordable housing plan. I mean, I know the town board has said it's an affordable house, housing plan. It sounds good to call it an affordable housing plan, but it's not because the component is what, maybe up to ten percent, maybe? But what you're looking at instead is that at a build-out of a thousand apartments, let's say you're going to get a hundred affordable housing, you're going to get nine hundred apartments where we're told it's, we're going to have young people who want to just party it up in Chappaqua or empty nesters, wealthy empty nesters who want to come to Chappaqua instead of going to a sunny place to live out the golden years with no taxes like Florida. So we're supposed to think that all these people are coming. And let's say they do, like you've said, and they're all here. Where, who's going to pay for all of this if the developers aren't paying the taxes? We are, our taxes are going to go up. And how are we going to pay that money? We're going to be taking money that we would have spent in town at all our nice businesses in town. Instead, we're going to use that to subsidize these wealthy, empty nesters and young singles who want to come up, who supposedly aren't going to have kids who are going to go to the schools. And so none of that makes any sense. And, um, so I just want to know what's going to happen with, uh, with the taxes. And I think the last thing I'll say is, I mean, what, what you're really thinking of doing is you're like trying to drop a bomb in the middle of downtown Chappaqua in order to save it, right? You're trying to like destroy the town in order to save it. It doesn't need saving. And if you think about the person who just spoke a couple of minutes ago, like that's an example of somebody who already lives here, who let's say is going to move to downtown and we're going to be subsidizing him. That's market rate. And so then what I think you should do is, look, I mean, the town board has always been big fans, you know, of all the politicians in town, which is great. Look, Hillary Clinton, who's our most famous resident, has said, "It takes a village," right? I mean, she wrote a whole book, "It Takes a Village." But you're ignoring that village. Like, why are you ignoring what Hillary Clinton has taught this town? And she's lived here for like twenty-five years. So I think that's a really good thing.
Please, we, we are over the three minutes.
Yeah, sure. So, um, okay, yes. Anyway, th- thanks for the time. I really appreciate it. But those are my comments. I think you could just zero in on the taxes. I think that would, um, that would really make a lot of people feel better if you could kind of quantify, because I've heard that our taxes could go up by thirty percent. And so I just think in real, that could be, I, I've heard that. I could be totally wrong. But if you could just kind of quantify it, that'd be great. In the, in the DGIS. Because I, I mean, the consultant should have done it, because what they said on pages one, two and one eleven, that the taxes, that the new development, that's just plainly false.
We're over the three minutes now, okay? We, I think we heard your, you heard your concern about that.
Right, right. The DGIS was totally false on the taxes. Right.
Okay, Pam, let's go ahead and take the, the other person who has their hand raised right now. Dana Gorlick.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Dana Gorlick. I live at one Northbridge Terrace. I would just like to reiterate the, the, um, sentiment that we've heard a lot tonight, which is that I am imploring the town board to hold this open and not close the public comment tonight. There's been a lot of, of discourse about this. I feel like many residents are just learning about what's going on. But most importantly, the Board of Ed hasn't fully weighed in. And I think that when many people think of Chappaqua, they think of our schools. The schools are really the keystone of our community. So to close this hearing without having a full record and hearing everything that the Board of Ed has to say would really not be doing service to the Board of Ed, who has literally moved mountains to keep the schools open during a global pandemic. And so I just ask that you keep this open, please.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thanks to everybody who, uh, provided comments this evening. Um, so I mentioned, uh, at the beginning of, uh, of tonight's public hearing, uh, that tonight the town board, uh, will consider a motion to close the public hearing on the DGIS. Um, and before we take a vote on whether or not to do so, I just wanted to take a moment, um, as a town board, uh, to reflect upon the public comments that we heard this evening, as well as those that we have received in our previous five public hearing sessions, um, as well as the numerous written comments that we've received, uh, all of which, as I mentioned earlier, uh, are available on our public comment portal, which is, uh, at our website, chappacawforward.org. So throughout the public hearing process, the town board, I've said it over and over, uh, has been listening with open hearts and open minds to all of the comments that have been made. Um, I know that at times, residents were frustrated by what they felt like was one-way communication. Um, and we explained that our job, uh, during the public hearing process is to listen and not to speak. The board held three work sessions, um, town board work sessions, at which we reflected on some of our own thoughts, um, about the information that was presented in the DGIS. And I do hope that the community felt some comfort in knowing that many of their concerns, uh, were shared by the town board members. That said, uh, as we're moving to close the public hearing this evening, I believe and town council, uh, concurs. I believe and town council concurs that now is an appropriate time for the town board to more thoroughly address what we have heard so that we can chart our path forward in terms of our legislative goals. So the overarching concern that I have heard throughout the public hearing process is around the density that's allowed under the maximum build-out scenario. The idea that we would have nine hundred and ninety-seven additional units in the hamlet. The community has clearly said that applying the Form-Based Code across our entire study area could generate more development than they're ready to accept at this time. I have been listening, and this is what I've heard loud and clear. I still believe in the Form-Based Code. And I support rezoning the Chappaqua hamlet to address the vacant storefronts, the hollowing out of our downtown, the need for housing diversity, and the desire to create a beautiful and cohesive and picturesque streetscape. However, as town supervisor, I have never been, nor am I willing now, to impose my vision on the community. That's not what the Form-Based Code is about. And it was never anyone's intention to reach a maximum build-out. That's why tonight, I am sharing what I believe is the right direction for the Form-Based Code. And I'm grateful that tonight I have the opportunity to finally do so after countless hours of listening and working through this process. First, what I'm proposing is to dramatically reduce the footprint of the Form-Based District to one single area. You heard that correctly. One single area. This area is the North Greeley Corridor, from the traffic light at the intersection with King Street up to Bishop Avenue. So why am I proposing that we focus on this particular area of the downtown hamlet? For me, the primary reason is that this area includes several properties that are ripe for redevelopment, including the former Rite Aid property, as well as the former Bistro Maxime's property. Most people in the community recognize that standing still isn't an option and that some changes are needed to reinvigorate our downtown. They understand that a downtown that's entirely zoned, as our downtown is today, for business, retail and light industrial is not compatible with market demand. I think that most people want to create more housing types, apartments for young professionals and for empty nesters. Most people want to locate development in the hamlet, close to transportation and where infrastructure exists to support development, as opposed to seeing multifamily housing built in quiet, bucolic residential neighborhoods. And while we may love the look of a new store like Home or an old favorite like Susan Lawrence, we also see that there's some discordant architecture and some really unlovely design that's inconsistent with what we want for our quaint and charming hamlet. Lastly, I think that most people would prefer not to see a dollar store go up in the old Rite Aid space. In short, focusing on the North Greeley Corridor will allow the town to take a meaningful, concrete step towards addressing some of the challenges confronting the downtown while avoiding the uncertainties that are concerning to many residents. So let me take a moment just to go over what I'm suggesting not be included in the Form-Based Code legislation. I am proposing that we do not rezone any of the town-owned property in the hamlet, including the train station parking lot. Now, I firmly believe, firmly believe that nine acres of pavement surrounding the train station is not the highest and best use of that space. Nor do I think that the commuter parking lot can and should remain untouched for generations to come. There are unique and, I think, really exciting possibilities to explore with repurposing the town-owned commuter lot. But I'm recommending that we leave those decisions to future town boards. Furthermore, I would suggest, my opinion, if anyone's asking, that next year, the town board host a charrette that's dedicated to the future of this specific area and informed by the environmental work, review work that's been completed by this administration. Another example of what I'm proposing that we not do is to not apply the Form-Based Code to South Greeley, where there's been a lot of concerns expressed over the potential height of new building. All of that said, I am recommending that our consultants complete the work that they began on the generic environment impact statement, the GEIS, for the entire business district. This will allow future administrations to add to the Form-Based District when the time is right and based on the lessons learned from the North Greeley area. This town board will complete the heavy lifting by finalizing the GEIS, which will then serve as a resource for future boards to leverage as they continue conversations about how best to revitalize the hamlet. Lastly, what I'm saying here tonight does not mitigate any of the well-researched and articulated concerns that we've heard about the Form-Based Code and the DGIS. And I am still looking forward to receiving the results of our consultant, professional consultants' additional analyses across a range of topic areas that we've discussed across these public hearings, including the profitability of three versus four-story buildings, expanding the affordable housing requirements and including a requirement for workforce housing, sidewalks and steep slopes, traffic and parking, architectural styles, et cetera. So I want to give all of the town board members a chance to speak. But if my fellow board members are amenable to this new direction, I would propose that we move forward with closing the public hearing on the DGIS and direct our staff and professional consultants to take the steps necessary to enact this new approach. Specifically, again, I propose that we complete the FTEIS and the seeker-finding statement using the current study area and revise the legislation to limit the Form-Based District to the North Greeley area. So with that said, Deputy Supervisor Jeremy Slant.
Thank you, Ivy. Care with me one second, please. I'm going to start in a different place than Ivy, but the general theme, although it will change along the way. Since the outset of this process, every single member of the town board, then Supervisor Rob Greenstein, then Councilwoman and current Supervisor Ivy Poole, then Deputy Supervisor and current Councilwoman Lisa Katz, then Councilwoman Halla McCosker, current Councilwoman Lauren Levin, Lori Morton, as well as myself, all engaged in the potential rezoning of the Chappaqua hamlet. And all this was based on doing something that was an honest, sincere and genuine effort to create something that worked for the municipality, that will work for the municipality, not just for today, but for every tomorrow that comes, for every person that ultimately resides here in the future and is here now. The same can be said for, for anyone who's been involved in this. And there's been some attacks that are unwarranted on those people in the working group, but the planning board who are residents as well. And even if they're not all residents, although some are, town staff who's worked tirelessly on this, all for the same objective, which is not to create something that doesn't fit, not to put a square peg in a circle hole, but to make something that works correct for this community and is best for not just the hamlet, but the entire municipality of Newcastle. You know, we can always do better. There's always issues in communication. There's always issues in process. Some people will describe certain things as hiccups. Some people will describe things as mistakes. But on the balance, I believe firmly that we've proceeded correctly and we've done the right thing. You know, unfortunately, somewhere along the way, this community strayed. And I think there's been not literal confusion, but that each one of these people that have been involved in this, and I'll use the planning board, the working group and the town board, have lived here a long time, have families here, have deep ties here, had children here. All of us have this real, real nexus to the community. And not one of us want to do anything that's bad or negative. And again, somewhere, somewhere we all went astray. And I have had missteps myself, but I want to share things that, that I have found so out, out of touch and not appropriate and unfair and unjust. And a lot of it has been done with a wide stroke of a brush. When people disagreed with the potential Form-Based Code, many were scared. And right or wrong, that was a visceral reaction. But as uncomfortable as it is to say it, some of the things that were said was that we were, we should stop misleading the public. We were deliberately misleading people. We are creating the Form-Based Code to add another detail to our resume. What's stopping the town board from personal gains a decade down the road? We were massively corrupt, massively corrupt. And developers donated to our campaign and someone received a campaign contributions. So you, the residents, should follow the smell and you'll find the stink. These are, I'm sharing, these are the posts that we've been dealing with and emails from a select few people throughout this entire process. A resident who might have disagreed is called a coward, digging into backgrounds to find out, even on a planning board member, someone who was volunteering her time, about whether she had a stake in the game and vilifying her. One resident even had the goal to mock my daddy. We've been accused of conspiracies about stealing signs. And when we made efforts to find out what happened to these signs, because we had no idea what it was about. When we asked, "Who did you speak to?" To a resident, silence, didn't respond to us. I've had a resident attack me on Facebook. When I reached out, no response. But it's easier for them there. It's, you know, again, I've been aggressive too. Make no mistake. It's been an ugly, unfortunate situation that we've all moved from. But the, the message isn't one of divisiveness. This should be one more of unity. And I agree that things should be fixed and things can go in a better route. I'll leave with one last comment that really upset me as well. Is someone said that we could not back away from the Form-Based Code because we would be displeasing the party bosses who are surely pushing for these changes. I can assure you that no one that I have spoken to in the Democratic Committee is pushing for any change specifically that I need to do X, Y or Z. And for that matter, as all of you probably know, when this started under Rob Greenstein, who was a Democrat, he was endorsed and ran as a Republican candidate. This is not a political issue. This is, we just have to find a way to make this work for all of us without saying that we are corrupt, dirty, filthy, no uncertain terms, heathens, is exactly what we've been called by a select few. You know, personal attacks aside, one of the issues which I've noticed even over the course of what was said in this meeting is that I believe there's been disinformation and it has been a frightening but useful tool. To assert that people did not have a place at the table is absolutely disingenuous and not fair. Again, could we have been more active in our pursuit of bringing people in? Absolutely. You can always do better. Always do better. But every interested agency, including the Board of Education, they were notified about what was going on. They, by law, were told what was going on. They could have come, anyone could have come throughout this process. So this is far more inclusive, even if we could have taken more steps to get where we wanted to. There's been a lot of issues that we need to still work through. But what I want to do before I continue is, this image, in my opinion, and I think it's fair to say, is not what was ever coming to the Newcastle hamlet. Yes, there may be people who signed a petition. Yes, there may be people who are scared. I would be terrified if I saw this and this was sold to me as the guarantee that this is coming to Newcastle. But that couldn't be the furthest thing from the truth. Even if we wanted to get to this maximum build-out, what would we have to do? We would have to sell all of our public land. And you, the residents, based on today's numbers, would just need a mere four hundred and twenty-five people, five percent, who voted in the last gubernatorial election, to stop with the permissive referendum and make sure it went to the ballot, to stop that from happening. Even if before we did that, I think that would be the appropriate time to have charrettes on public land so we could dictate what we wanted there. Do you, maybe there's a private-public partnership, as I've repeatedly stated. Maybe there's the opportunity to have a real community center that can be built on this, green space built in. There's so many possibilities. But to get to that image I shared with you before, which has been sent out as the gospel, this is what's coming. This is what's coming if you do not oppose the Form-Based Code. You'd also have to have all of our private property in that area, which there's about a hundred units, maybe more of property, but not, but dozens and dozens of those units or those properties that are adjacent to one another, sold to developers to make this work. It wasn't coming. We said we didn't want it. But there has been a message incessantly that that's what in fact was coming. So what do I want from the Form-Based Code? I want what the community wants. I have said from the outset, and I've repeated, you could probably find it in public hearings, on Facebook, in emails. I want to shrink the scope and the size of the Form-Based Code. I don't want the Form-Based Code what it is today. I have concerns over five-story buildings, just like you do. I don't want six or whatever it may be, or five above-ground parking garages spoiling our, our hamlet. Even if I don't think that, certainly before the streetscape, it was bucolic. And certainly, I believe that keeping density in the hamlet keeps the entire area bucolic so we don't ruin or destroy those areas that we hold as green and want to make them accessible for recreation and nature. So once we strip away all of this visceral feeling, the same feeling that I had when I first saw this build-out and said, "I don't want Southern Westchester dropped into our hamlet." And you pause and you analyze what it is and what it isn't, and what we can control and what we can't. I support a hundred percent developing with a Form-Based Code, not as a community, meaning this is just the footprint or part of me, the blueprint for that North Greeley area. And most of the people that I've engaged on this topic, who have reached out after getting these mailings and seeing these posts on Facebook, but I've explained to them what that is and what it is and where we want to go potentially. Those people who's adamantly against this Form-Based Code, not knowing the accurate information, change their tune, much like I suspect many of you and many people across the municipality will do the same. So I don't want this in its current iteration. I've repeatedly stated I don't want it in its current iteration. I want to work with the community. And I believe, and as I believe that I have and we have, I believe that we should spend more time on North Greeley and look at that as the footprint to start as the, as the kickoff point, if you will, for the Form-Based Code. I do believe with Ivy as well, and agree with Ivy, that we should be pushing this forward, not in an inefficient or improper manner, but moving this proverbial ball forward because this is the right plan for the community. And we are not there. We have to get through the draft generic environmental impact statement. Then we have the final. And then we get to the Form-Based Code. And all along the way, there'll be more opportunity to be heard. I, you know, I look at a lost opportunity if we do not move forward on the public lands. And I do believe that we should make sure we keep that in the Form-Based Code plan. I actually would support continuing to use the Form-Based Code to include the public property. But I'm agreeable to not do it at this point in time and allow for the opportunity for it to happen. Because if true, if what we say is, is going to happen, some people say that commuting will drop and there'll be less people going into the city. Sitting on tar and blacktop does no good for anybody. And nobody is going to come. The evil developers who can actually work with us and have charrettes at the appropriate time can find a great public-private partnership, but they're certainly not going to come if we have an industrially-zoned public property and they're going to have to go through the headache in the lift at zero, as opposed to at least fulfilling or furthering this enough that they can move forward. So I ask that everyone keep an open mind. I ask that you work with us. I ask that we all calm and lower the temperature. And I'm confident that we can move this ball in the right direction.
Thanks, Jeremy. Councilwoman Lisa Katz. Sorry, I'm calling on people because it seems like the right thing to do with, with, with Zoom. But, you know, maybe we can all go and then we can all kind of dialogue afterwards, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, no, that works. Uh, okay, so first, I really want to thank everybody who spoke tonight and also everyone who spoke at the past five public hearings, as well as those who have submitted all of their written comments on the FGIS. And I believe it is close to five hundred written comments that we've received so far. So, you know, I guess a little background. I became involved in town government years ago for a very simple reason. And I was gravely concerned that And I was gravely concerned that our local elected officials had lost their way and were not listening to residents, leading to poor policy decisions that conflicted with the basic principles of representative government. And this bothered me tremendously. And I believe that our town has so many talented, intelligent and community oriented people that really should be respected and listened to. And, you know, I think if residents have taken one thing from the way I believe I've conducted myself throughout my tenure on the board and during this process, is that you are always heard loud and clear by me. And you are never fear mongers. You are nothing other than passionate, concerned citizens who love Newcastle and seek to preserve the very essence of what makes our town such a special place. And I applaud you for that and I represent you and I'm privileged to do so. And as I've said before at many of these public hearings, bring it on, bring on your passion, your thoughts and opinions. Because I prefer that much more to apathy. And I think, given what Ivy and Jeremy just said, you know, you've gotten through. So you should all be, uh, be proud of what you've done. And just to let you know that I'm here as your representative and as your representative only. And I intend to carry out my duties accordingly, in an intellectually honest manner to ensure policymaking for residents and not simply at residents. So with the above in mind, at this juncture and taking into account, you know, what Ivy just said also, here's where I am with respect to, you know, our downtown hamlet and the efforts to revitalize it. Whether via form based code, you know, which is still contemplated by Jeremy and Ivy or other alternative devices. So again, let's cut to the chase. I am completely against four and five story buildings in the Chappaqua hamlet. I have serious issues regarding the scope of the FBC, parking, infrastructure, taxation, a myriad of other concerns. And even if those concerns are studied by our consultants, I am very concerned that the form based code will forever be out of scale with the character of our town. Now, I agree that town owned land should be completely removed from any FBC proposal. It is a huge amount of property with one landowner. And I for one, want to ensure that the planning board and residents would have a significant say in any future development of town property. So I definitely advocate for taking that out. Now, I know Ivy had mentioned that she wants to now limit it to, to North Greeley. So, and Jeremy's, but both Jeremy and Ivy still want to study it. Now, if, if that's the case, I'm thinking, let's just stop it. Let's stop the form based code now. I think that we need a genuinely diverse working group made up of town residents and stakeholders, like the Board of Education, the library, merchants and every other stakeholder. And we have to form that immediately to begin an effort to conduct proper charrettes. Only by doing that are we going to ensure that the residents get what they want. Whether it be a full, full blown form based code, nothing at all, or just North Greeley. We have no way of knowing that unless we do these charrettes. And I think they need to be done meaningfully, especially given the confines of the current pandemic. All to make anything that we're going to consider with regard to any rezoning in the downtown to be what our citizens and professionals have come together and produced as a collective vision for the Chappaqua hamlet. I believe that this is an essential element of any successful rezoning to our downtown at all. I am not at this point convinced that the form based code is a proper device for a town such as ours. And I think that anything we do has to be preceded by a proper series of charrettes for not just town based, town owned land, but the entire downtown Chappaqua hamlet as a whole. Because in this manner, we can design it as a community. And as someone recently mentioned it to me yesterday, I think it might actually be fun to have people sit around and, and really figure out what we want and what we want to see as the future of our town. But without this, there is no way to ensure that what any rezoning proposed actually represents the vision of our residents for our downtown Chappaqua hamlet. And I think that all of us would agree that much of the public outcry over the form based code is a reaction to this deficiency that 100% needs to be cured. I also believe that another separate, genuinely diverse resident led working group has to be formed to conduct a parallel effort to examine whether changes in our existing planning board process can be made to achieve the goal of making an approval process faster or less expensive for any future development without effectively eviscerating the planning board and public input. The result of this will culminate in a separate option for zoning and in a way that we will make sure that we can maintain the bucolic nature of our hamlet and other important factors to our residents. We have to take a really hard look at this. And, uh, you know, one of the legitimate concerns that's been raised, we, over the, you know, past number of months is that we live in a residential town. We are not a significantly large commercial town. Our residents are engaged and traditionally have significant input. So I am very skeptical of any rezoning where we do not involve those residents in an incredibly significant manner. Not just through public hearings like this, but through a real public engagement and charrette process. Uh, I think there are a lot of questions also that need to be answered. And, and most importantly, I think that some of them are not going to be able to be answered. The, the concept of rezoning was initially conceived before the COVID-19 pandemic hit. And I think that the impacts of that really need to be studied. And I don't see how the town board can make any good decision or take a hard look at what's necessary in town until the impact of the crisis that we are living through is firmly in the rearview mirror so that we can analyze its impacts on future housing, development and commercial needs. So I want to be clear that I will always be vociferously demanding full, complete and intellectually honest responses to all substantive comments regarding any rezoning of the downtown, whether it's as part of a form based code or otherwise. I am deeply skeptical that this can be accomplished this calendar year. I believe it's going to take a long time to get this done right. And that's okay, because this is our town. I have also lived here for 14 years and I intend to be here for a very long time. And I want to be proud of this town, both as a resident and as a town board member. This is a really special place. And, you know, on behalf of residents who have placed their trust in me and the town board, I believe getting it done right is more important than simply getting it done right now. So in closing, I think that the public outcry on this form based code must be heated. This is not to say that future development and rezoning is not an option. Only that we must be exceedingly thoughtful about it and involve the entire community to actively participate in this process through charrettes of the entire downtown and not simply public hearing. If residents are feeling like they aren't being heard or valued, that is not okay with me. We need to recognize as public servants that we are simply living in a different world than we did a year ago. Just take a look at our empty train station. And I think that the residents we serve understand this and will embrace more recognition on the policy front, that a major course correct on any rezoning here is in order. And I don't think as a town board, we should be afraid of that. I think now's the time to take a deep breath, take a step back and get it right together as a community with active community involvement on all fronts and on all issues. I truly believe that that is the only way forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going alphabetically, so LM, Lauren Levin, you're, you're up next.
Thanks Ivy. Um, so I genuinely believe with your comments and the work of our consultants and the work of the town board, because we spent countless hours doing research, we've spent countless hours hearing you all out, reading your comments through email. We can come up with something, we can devise a code that incorporates balanced growth without negatively affecting our schools and overall community. Particularly in this legislation, I think that we need to address three core issues. The first is in process and administration, the velocity with which many projects have been done in Newcastle have been often quite slow. It's one of the areas where we get the most negative feedback as a board. And examples include Chappaqua Crossing or 91 Bedford. For many residents too, the process with simple home renovations for installing a generator can be very cumbersome. At its core, the form based code addresses the issue of process aiming to provide easy to understand legislation through images, which current legislation doesn't include, so that any business owner developer understands what we want and what they need to do to operate in our town. We are hoping to eliminate the often defeating back and forth of applying and reapplying and the need to run through different layers of approval, which often demotivates investment in our town. We have an amazing director of planning, Sabrina, and a great team to execute this code efficiently and effectively. And adding a change, I do propose that we add the planning board review through a public hearing to allow the public the opportunity to comment in certain circumstances, but I'm not, I'm, I'm sure no one wants a referendum on whether to have or not have Muntans. There also needs to be verbiage in the code that paces our development so that we don't have downtown in a permanent construction zone. We can look to developing a process that allows a certain number of permits for building. And the third, the second thing that I think that is important to address is the zoning map. I do think that, you know, to Supervisor Poole and Deputy Supervisor Solan's points about relooking and revising the map and particularly the northern corridor of Greeley is something to look at. But I also just want to say that the, the current zoning map in, in the legislation is quite confusing. There's the F4 and the F5. Many people confuse it as the number of stories that can be built. I think we can take a page from the Town of Malta, which has had a form based code for the past seven years and identify zones for certain permissible heights. And based on public comments, we need to reevaluate if five stories or even four stories is appropriate in the heart of downtown, particularly King and Greeley. Further, I think we need to add a neighborhood compatibility and transitional buffer clause to protect communities like 149 King Street. We also have to partner with the Landmark Advisory Committee to determine landmark buildings and continue to preserve the history of our community. Finally, our consultants introduced the concept of the form based code because our town lacks diverse housing options. People seem to miss that when they talk about diversity, the inclusions and initiatives here, I also hope to be able to address issues such as senior housing, workforce housing and affordable housing in the code. As a community, we of course do not want to overburden our schools or town services. So I think identifying zones in the code for certain types of housing is certainly necessary. And lastly, to our wonderful historian Gray Williams and to also Ms. Dora Strauss's comments earlier today through email, we need to remove the concept of architectural styles in the code. In my humble opinion, it just limits creativity and just creates a stifling situation. And rather than legislate styles such as Tudor or Georgian, we can legislate building types such as traditional shopfront, mixed use shopfront, townhouse, condo, apartment. We then can legislate and define the site, lot and outdoor standards. More importantly, through all this, it isn't lost on any of us who serve on this board that all of you deeply care about our community. You've all devoted countless hours to comment, understand the code and interact with us. And I hope we can all recognize that the work we do isn't easy or without making trade offs. We each work to grow, to improve and to make our town a better place. Thank you.
Thanks Lauren. Okay Laurie, you're alphabetically last, but not in my heart.
Oh, thanks Ivy. Um, first of all, I really want to thank Lauren. I think that her comments are a perfect illustration of the diligence and work and attention that she has paid to every responsibility that she's had while on the town board. So, uh, thank you Lauren, that was really fantastic. So, you know, revitalizing our Chappaqua hamlet downtown has been a talking point for Newcastle leaders and residents for the 15 plus years that I have lived here. And I have been told by long term and lifelong residents that it has been discussed for decades preceding my time in Newcastle. I am very grateful to the volunteers who worked together on multiple committees and put in many hours to update the comprehensive plan in 2017 from the version that had been initially prepared in the 1980s. I participated myself on the housing committee. And among significant conclusions, the lack of housing diversity to support not only affordable housing, but also lack of apartment options for workforce housing, empty nesters and newly flown young adults were highlighted in those sessions. Some key summary points from the entire exercise of the comprehensive plan were goals to create a sustainable mix of commercial and residential uses within the hamlets, create vibrant and walkable mixed use areas in the hamlets that are well connected to public transit. And another key summary point was enhance the aesthetic quality of the hamlets with these high principles in mind. And my support for the general concept of zoning that carefully predefines scale of building and allows for flexibility of use. There are elements, many elements of the DG EIS and the draft code that give me concern, great concern. First, the overall allowable scale and its interference with open spaces and open vistas that we quite adore about our Chappaqua hamlet downtown. Also, this, the, um, scale is insufficiently ambitious with regard to preservation and expansion of green spaces. I think that it is insufficiently imaginative in terms of potential uses of town owned property for greatest impact and community benefit. I have issue with parking and traffic challenges of increased density, as well as the limitations for planning board in public input. I also am concerned about the limitations for the staging of growth and downtown disruption over time, as well as general uncertainty about the likelihood of success of the form based code to achieve the desired effect for Newcastle. It is a hypothesis that indeed may be best served with a test. I look forward to our consultants getting to work on the full spectrum of issues and questions presented by our many engaged, informed and thorough stakeholders, town board members and residents. This work and its response is critical to make the most of the time and input that our community has provided. I hope that the consultant's response and revisions yield an informative FG, FG EIS that can guide our thoughts about future legislation and zoning choices. My position on the form based code during my campaign for office was that any zoning legislation should be broadly met with enthusiasm and community buy-in. In addition to my own concerns, the community distress and outcry makes it clear that broad approval would be very hard to achieve. I am encouraged by the position suggested by Supervisor Poole that allows for a test case parcel rather than implementation of the full zoning change. It may allow us to test the form based code hypothesis and generate some data that can be used to inform future decisions still necessary to revitalize the hamlet. The implementation of even this zoning change will be predicated by the continued due diligence as informed by feedback to the DG EIS and future public comment on the FG EIS and the revised code. I am grateful to the many who have turned their interest, passion and expertise to the challenge of the productive future of our beautiful Chappaqua hamlet.
So I had to unmute myself. So, I mean, does anybody, I said we would kind of go around because it felt easier to go around than to try to talk over each other. But does anybody have any sort of comments or reflections on, on what they've heard? Jeremy, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, I missed the point.
We're so polite here tonight.
I missed the point I wanted to share before and, and I think Lauren may have sort of referenced 149 King specifically. And I was able, fortunately, one of the residents there invited me and another resident, let me sort of see how they back up to North Greeley. And how some of the buildings, some of the units are literally, seems to be feet away from the property line. So, you know, one of the things that I, you know, I, I want people to know that we will look at, no matter what goes, no matter what ultimately, what direction this goes is, Um, so, you know, one of the things that I, you know, I, I want people to know that we will look at, no matter what goes, no matter what ultimately, what direction this goes is. You know, how to protect that vista, how to protect, uh, not having a building immediately adjacent to, or immediately behind or up to your window. Um, I also, I think that the reason why North Greeley is, is really adequate, uh, or a good place to, to start. Uh, is that, uh, there is less of an issue for parking because a lot of those buildings have access to their own parking. In their own lots, for example, the Rite Aid, the Susan Lawrence Building, and even some of the North real units in the back have access to parking. So it wouldn't need to be an issue of street parking per se. Uh, and then the other two things I wanted to mention, which reference the planning board. As we're discussing this and one thing that we've discussed before is if a building is. Is created of a certain size with a certain number of units, you know, planning board comes back into play. Um, whenever you aggregate lots, which you would have to do to make anything come, anything remotely like what people fear. Then the planning board could come back into play. So there are, there are things that we've discussed previously and I've said this numerous times, at some point, people are going to have to pivot. Because it's not going to be this monster that they see coming. And now's that time to pivot. I'm sure some people will say this is not the answer. Um, but, uh, this is the right direction and, and we've been open to this from the, from the get-go. That initial build-out was not what anyone wanted, to be very clear. You can take down much easier than you can build up.
Okay. Anybody else? So, um, again, I'm, I'm proposing this evening that we move forward with closing the public hearing on the D G E I S. Um, and I will entertain a motion to do so, um, and to direct our consultants to. And, and town staff to move forward with, uh, the direction that we've discussed tonight with regard to scaling back. The, uh, the proposed legislation on the form-based code.
Uh, listen, I, I certainly am happy to, to make a, the motion. I support it. Um. And then obviously we can make the determination who wants to support it as well. Uh, but I move to close the public hearing on the D G E I S. Uh, except receive written comment for period of 30 days that will close on March 25th, 2001 at 5:00 P M. And that we adjourn the public hearing on the proposed form-based code legislation until a future date to be determined after the proposed legislation has been. Revised to reflect the scope and objectives that we've discussed and articulated tonight. Uh, by the majority of the town board, um, or the town board. So, uh, that's my motion and application.
I will say that if, uh. I'm not going to second that, but I think that if the majority of the town board is still advocating for studying the entire. Uh, form-based code. That I would advocate, as I, someone said tonight, I think it was Sid Foxon, that. There will be new information based upon the Board of Education's finding that we have not heard and the residents have not heard yet. So I would definitely say that if you're still advocating to study the entire form-based code, as I think I heard everyone say. That I would recommend we leave it open until we hear, uh, receive that information and we give residents a chance to comment on that and ask questions in person. And then at that point, close it and leave it open for the additional 30 days.
I just want to clarify that the proposal is to continue to study. Uh, the entire business district for the purpose of the generic environmental impact statement, not for the purpose. Of the form-based code. So the, the form-based code legislation itself will be further constrained to a single area. My proposal, that being North Greeley, however, to do the study, uh, with regard to the G E I S on the, the entire, uh, study areas. It's, it's written today. So I just, I wanted to clarify that, that piece. Um, you know, my, my perspective on, um, the fact that the. School, the school board comments are still outstanding. Um, you know, obviously I, I said this at the top of the call. Um, we are told that the school board will be preparing a final report. Um, and that it will be made available to the public, uh, and that the public can attend a school board meeting to ask questions and to review. Uh, the findings and, and discuss, um, and the date that we were given today, uh, for that is March 3rd. Um, you know, we will, will be, as you know, Jeremy, in this motion, uh, addressed. Um, holding open the written comment period, uh, through, I think it's March 25th, uh, is the date for that. So that. In my mind, provides ample time for people to be able to, um, to, to weigh in and for, uh. Both to read the, the school board's analysis, um, and to be able to weigh in on that and for, for us to be able to do the same. So, um, you know, I am. Suggesting that, that we move forward with the motion and that's, that's my, my feeling on where we stand on that right now.
So Ivy, with that consideration, the, um, the final report from the school board would then be included in. What was returned to the consultants for analysis. And any residents that had input to provide on that analysis. Uh, could be, would, would, would also be included in written comments. They would submit by written comment then. And would have the opportunity to make public comment in the setting of the school board meeting. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
So I'll, I'll go back. We, Jeremy entered a motion. I, we needed a second on that if we're going to move forward with it. Okay, uh, should we do, should we do a roll call vote for this so that each person, since we're on Zoom? Okay, so, um. I'll, I'll go in order. Uh, Deputy Supervisor Jeremy's planned.
I think for the reasons previously stated, I, I support, uh, this motion and, and vote in affirmative.
Okay, Councilwoman leaves the cap.
Uh, for the same reasons previously stated, I vote no.
Councilwoman Lauren, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know that we should leave and that we should leave it open.
Councilwoman Lauren Levin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lori Morton.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes.
You. Ivy, do you want to vote?
Oh, I didn't vote. I voted affirmatively. Okay. So.
We do have a couple of other things.
What's next on the agenda this evening?
Hard to believe. Um, consent, um, agenda items. Bye Sabrina.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
I don't have it up in front of me after all of this. I've lost it.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Base.
Alrighty, um. I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted consisting of adoption of minutes February 9th, 2021. Authorization to issue RFP for roof at Inningwood Pump Station. Resolution allowing delegation of third-party fire safety and property maintenance inspections and authorization to post positions D P W.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye. To approve the payment of claims in the amount of $752,972.23. Listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detail voucher detail reports and all dated February 19th, 2021. Checks issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, February 24th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to accept the proposal from Sterling Appraisals, Inc. for a restricted preliminary appraisal for Whipperville Club located at 150 Whipperville Road, Armagh, New York 10504. For statutory purposes for the total amount of $8,750, which would be split with the town of North Castle. Therefore, bring the amount due for the town of Newcastle would be $4,375. These expenses.
There, there's a revised, um, resolution. It was more than that. They're not, they're not splitting it 50/50.
Sorry. Uh. I do not have that.
Do you have the numbers? Do you have the numbers, Lisa? Let me just plug those numbers into the.
Yeah, it was, um. It was 6,000. $6,047.50.
As reported by our town administrator.
Sorry about that.
Second.
Aye.
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 You got it, Jeremy?
No, I, I, I lost and just go ahead.
Anyone else?
You're doing great, Lauren.
All right. Move to authorize the purchase of repair parts from Corrosion Products and Equipment, Inc. for repair of the scraper flights at Millwood Water Treatment Plant for the total estimated amount of $5,415.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the promotion of Brendan Riley to the position of general foreman within the Highway Department of the Department of Public Works. The annual salary of $110,924.02 effective March 1st, 2021, which will be subject to a probationary period of 52 weeks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the promotion of John Midoris to the position of assistant general foreman within the Highway Department of Department of Public Works. At the annual salary of $96,396.08 effective March 1st, 2021, which will be subject to a probationary period of 52 weeks.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
That's it.
That's it.
We move to adjourn. Are we all set?
I think so. I think we've had enough.
Right. I'm happy to move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You so much for dealing with all of the technical issues at the beginning.
Thanks Pam.
Sorry, there've been a little glitches here and there, but we got it through and, and everybody who wanted to be participating did get in, so.
Thanks so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night.